Good afternoon.
We call the special, it's not a special board meeting, it's a regular board meeting for April 27th, 2022 to order at 4:03 PM. Kathy, roll call please.
Bankus, I am so sorry. Bankus. Mrs. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Here.
Mr. Loma?
Here.
Mr. Melpackham?
Here.
Mrs. Nelson? Mrs. Ott?
Here.
So we have six board members present in person at the boardroom today. Director Nelson is on excused absence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Adoption of agenda. Director Daniels, can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes. May I move that the Board of Education adopt the agenda as amended by removing F-1 contract awards as there are no contract awards.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Kathy, roll call please.
Dr. Bankes?
Um.
Bankus.
Bankus, I am so sorry. I don't know why I keep doing that. Bank, Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Melpackham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The Board adopts the agenda as presented. We do have executive session scheduled on the Board Agenda for 90 minutes. Director Loma, can you please make the motion to enter into executive session?
Yes. I move that the Board of Education convene into executive session to discuss negotiation per CRS 24-6-424E, particular matter, interest-based bargaining, meet and confer for educational support professionals, executive professionals, and Colorado Springs Education Association.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Kathy, roll call please.
Dr. Bankes?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Dr. Melpackham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. We will enter into executive session and reconvene for a regularly scheduled board meeting at 5:30. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Welcome back, everybody. Sorry to keep you waiting. I apologize for that. We were in executive session downstairs trying to figure out some of compensation for our employees and staff, and some of those run a little bit longer sometimes. So, we are reconvening in public session. Good to see all of you again. There is no need to modify our agenda after executive session. For those of you who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was, the agenda as amended by removing F-1 contract awards as there are no contract awards. Joining us at the board podium today are Director Jorgensen, Melpackham, Bankus, Director Daniels, Director Loma should be joining us shortly, and Director Ott. Director Nelson is on excused absence. Pledge of Allegiance. May I please have the students from Keller Elementary lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you to all of you, the students from Keller. You were awesome.
Awards and recognitions. We are recognizing two students today, from what I see. Dr. Gludich, I'm going to turn it over to you to recognize these students.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much and good evening. Board members, tonight we have a Palmer student who won the Boys and Girls Club of the Pike's Peaks Region Youth of the Year Award. Palmer High School student Haley Claiborne, would you please come forward, won the award and will now be competing for the Colorado Youth of the Year as well. We're very pleased and proud of our student. This is a comprehensive leadership program aimed at thoroughly preparing students to live and lead in a diverse, global, and integrated world economy. Congratulations and thank you for making D11 look good. We appreciate you.[377.12][377.12](Applause)
Ms. Claiborne. Ms. Claiborne.
Congratulations. Good luck. Good morning.[385.71][385.71](Applause)
Congratulations, Ms. Claiborne, and best wishes in all your future endeavors.
Also, board members, tonight we have a Doherty student who won the Reflections Cultural Arts Program Civil Award, but at this time I'd like to ask Nora Brown to come forward. Nora is the Colorado PTA and El Paso Council PTA Reflections Chair to give us some additional background information on this award, and it's one that has been, oh, how many years?
Wow. Amazing. Good evening.
Hi. Thank you, Director Gludich, Mr. Melpackham, board members. My name's Nora Brown. I'm a former D11 school board member and immediate past president for Colorado PTA as well as Reflections Chair. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak about the Reflections Program. We're proud of Marley, our Doherty student who you'll be recognizing tonight, and for all the students and schools who participated in the program this year. Reflections was started in Colorado and was adopted by National PTA in 1969. The founder, Mary Lou Anderson, is from Colorado Springs, and she was just inducted into the Colorado Women's History Hall of Fame. She realized then, and studies have proven, the relationship between arts and education. PTA advocates for arts in our schools citing the cultivation of imagination and creativity, the development of critical thinking and problem-solving skills, the processing of thoughts and emotions, and the creation of neural pathways that enhance learning. They support the whole child and connect families, schools, and communities. I want to thank District 11 for its historically strong support of the arts and for being a leader in the county for arts-forward philosophies and opportunities for our students. I know Dr. Gludich is planning on saying more about Marley's award, however, first, I just want to take a moment to remember Don Green. You all have a flyer about Mr. Green. So, Colorado PTA honors Don Green, who passed away in October last year. He was a friend of Mary Lou Anderson's and helped create the Reflections Program. He came up with the name itself after a planning session in all Colorado City when they stepped out and it had been raining, and they mused about how art reflects the artist's heart and soul. He was a prolific artist in Colorado Springs with his iconic steel-clad sculptures around the city and state. You'll recognize his works at the Pike's Peak Center, UCCS, and the Bison and Native American Sculpture at the Colorado Springs Airport. More importantly for us, Don was an art teacher in District 11 for 30 years. He taught at Watson and Doherty, and we have his sculptures within the district as well. For example, the St. Bernard, the mascot for Saban Middle School, and the Coronado High School Cougar are his art pieces. Don was a friend of PTA, a valuable part of District 11's history, and we honor and remember him through his art and his legacy for arts education. Thank you.
Thank you.[629.89][629.89](Applause) Board members, tonight I'd like to introduce you to Marley Harlow Tafoya, and I hope I pronounced her name correctly. She was awarded the Silver during the virtual award ceremony, virtual award ceremony on March 13th. The theme this year was "I Will Change the World By," and her visual arts entry was called "Heart Within." And can you imagine why? Her statement was, "My inspiration for my peace is my dream of becoming a cardiologist." Congratulations, Marley.[660.01][660.01](Applause) And we thank you too for being with District 11 and making us look great. Do you have parents with you tonight?
Yes, this is Heather.
Hi, Mom. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thank you. This is for you. Get together. There you go.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. On the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two. Great.[690.51][690.51](Applause)
Thank you again, Ms. Harlow Tafoya. Congratulations. Maybe the Board can look at her artwork if, the one that won the award, if it's available, maybe you can just email the Board the artwork. Thank you. Moving on. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving on, the next item on the agenda, the school spotlight. And we have the staff and students from Keller Elementary School here joining us today. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Gludich.
Yes, sir, I will. And actually, I see the principal standing up, and I think she's going to come and take over. Come on up, Stacy. So this is Stacy Brisbane, our principal at Keller Elementary School. And tonight Keller Elementary School has some really important information to share with you about their school and what makes them a good place to be.
Thank you.
Stacy?
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to share our highlights about our Keller family. Keller located in the center of Colorado Springs, across the street from Russell Middle School, and we currently have 397 students pre-K5. We are on a performance framework of performance, and our permit rate is about 42%. So we permit in about 42% of our students every year. Right now, we're looking at some different things for next school year. Keller would like to become a steam-focused school, so we have been on that route. We have gotten some R&amp;D funding to help us with that, and we've moved forward with that. The first person I'd like to introduce is Tricia Torres. She's one of our TLC, she is our TLC and fantastic leader in our building.
Thank you for hearing this. I just want to tell you some of the things that Keller offers. We have several different programs that we have that aren't on this list, but our highlights would be Take Flight, which is a program that Mr. Jorgensen got to hear all about today. But it's a program to help students who struggle with reading, and it's designed specifically for students who have indicators of dyslexia, but it helps all students read. We also have several enrichment activities after school. We usually have between 12 and 15 different clubs going at a time for each semester that include everything from pottery to cooking to math prodigy to, you name it. It's on the list. We have sports intramurals that are offered. Those are outside of the clubs, so in addition to the clubs. We also have a steam night for parents. We have different themes for those, cardboard challenges, different things that invite families in to celebrate steam activities with their kids and give them ideas and an opportunity to be involved in their child's education as well as give them things to do at home. We offer parent tech nights, and we also have band and orchestra that we offer for fourth and fifth grades. So, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reed Anderson.
So we forgot to also mention that. Steam next year is going to be a part of what we surveyed our staff and our stakeholders for. The students have always picked steam as part of their learning engagement pieces, and then our families have also supported those pieces too. So these are our very, our fifth graders this year, and this is my very first kindergarten group, and we learned a lot about kindergarten lunch together the very first year I was there. And so these guys are going to bring up what they like about steam and where they want to go with it.
Dr. Suits Day is an annual celebration themed after Dr. Suits in which we do fun and engaging activities all day. I really liked to make a oobleck, a non-Newtonian fluid, and loved the balloon racing I got to do in steam that day. I also learned how to make oobleck. I learned some math magic tricks and learned that balloon racing actually exists.
Hi. Hi, I'm Namie Loof, and today I'll be telling you about what I learned at Camp Elum and what I like about steam. At Camp Elum, I learned that if you work together, you can get things accomplished. What I like about steam is that you can make things, have fun, and learn about science. Thanks for listening and have a good night.
Hello, I'm Reed, and this year at Keller we did many steam activities. One example is how I had the opportunity to teach B-bots to kindergartners. They read a sight word off of flashcard. Then they found the word on a special mat. They coded the B-bot to go to that square. More steam examples are math blocks. It helps kids learn math, but it is very interactive. Another steam activity is balloon racing. This is a fun competition to help kids learn about friction. Oobleck is another fun, hands-on steam activity, helping kids to learn about viscosity. Enterland is a steam game that helps kids learn about online safety. Kids in younger grades may build boats. It helps them learn about buoyancy and problem-solving. Finally, the last steam activity on the list is toothpicks and marshmallows or apple slices. This helps students build engineering skills.
Nice to have you guys.[1042.23][1042.23](Applause) Keller is 50 years old this year, and so our new tagline is 50 Years of Excellence, Full Steam Ahead. So next year we'll be a steam-focused school, and we're very excited about that. And the kids have helped to plan that programming, have picked the topics that we are working on. We have two 3D printers coming in that kindergartners can actually use, which is pretty fantastic. So the kids have really done a nice job with that, so we appreciate it. We hope we see you tomorrow. Tomorrow is our 50th celebration. We have already sold 600 tickets for the In-N-Out truck, so love to see you there. Thank you so much.[1077.23][1077.23](Applause)
Thank you.
So, Ms. Brisbane?
Yes.
Hang on a minute. Board members, do you have any comments or feedback or questions for Ms. Brisbane? All the students?
Oh, shall we put a student on the spot?
They're good at it.
Just have one come forward.
Gabe, come on up.
Cover.
The shyest one I've ever met.
Put the microphone down so we can hear him. Can you tell us your name?
I'm Gabe.
Hi, Gabe. I'm Nick Gludich. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I'm really doing nicely today. Here's the question of the day. Are you ready? Tell us one thing that you learned new today in school.
Well, today, I think I got to learn a lot of stuff about turtles.
Turtles? Tell us one thing about a turtle that we may not know.
Well, that most of the percentage of the turtles that, when they hatch?
Yes, sir.
Once they go to the ocean, most of the percentage don't make it sadly.
That is true, and that is sad. Congratulations. Thank you. Can I shake your hand?
Sure.
Nice to have you.[1151.15][1151.15](Applause)
This goes to show that the kids have to pay attention in class, because you don't know if Dr. Gludich is going to be asking them questions out here.
Exactly. We already prepped him a little bit about Dr. Gludich.[1164.01][1164.01](Laughter)
Oh, I stopped there.
We're like, he's going to ask questions. It's okay.[1169.83][1169.83](Laughter)
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Brisbane? Oh, I do have, oh, Jason, you're already on.
Yeah, I did get to visit Tricia today. I delivered some of the cookies that all of our schools and departments got. I was able to deliver a few today around my house and business. And so I asked Tricia, I said, "Can you give me a rundown on this?" And she's like, "How much time do you have? Sit down." And she talked to me all about Taking Flight, and which is one that, one of our teachers from our stakeholder dinner had said to come out, so I'm going to still come out and catch that lesson. But man, how they are, how Taking Flight is dealing with the indicators of dyslexia and these kids, it's just amazing. So, Tricia's very equipped, wonderful leader. She walked me through everything, explained it all, and so that was wonderful. It's a wonderful program there for kids that are having troubles with that. And then I will be there tomorrow, and you actually had over 40% participation in your 5E survey from your community, so you have Ice Cream Social tomorrow night, so maybe drum up some more business for you guys to come out.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
You earned it.
Yep.
Director Bankus?
I want to add my comments, and thank you so much for coming to the Board and spotlighting. And I want to thank the students in particular. I think that you did a really good job of coming up and expressing yourselves, and I see that this is a stepping stone for you to go on to middle school next year, and I hope to see you back here again at the board meeting with your accomplishments. So thank you so much, and thank you to the adults who all made it possible.
Thank you. They're pretty fantastic. Yeah.[1265.01][1265.01](Applause)
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, just a quick question to you.
Yeah.
You shared some of the great things that are happening at Keller. Any asks of the Board? Anything that the Board should be aware of that Keller?
You know, I have to say, the one thing that we have found very helpful this year is we are doing what's called a care team, which is a pilot program that the district is doing with all the departments. So I had a meeting with multiple departments at one time, so the Etzel's, Natasha was out there, Chad was out there, Carol Gates was out there. And so part of that pilot is, I know it's time-consuming, but I had one hour meeting and got seven hours worth of meetings done. And we walked out of there with an action plan that everybody agreed on, and everybody got to hear the Keller story at the same time. So as much as we can support that, that would be fantastic. The time given back and the amount of purpose that went forward with that is fantastic. Our MISs are written right now. We had some direct instruction. We had barriers removed. People came in and asked what barriers we were, and they took those barriers down for us. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you for that feedback.
Thank you.
And congratulations on turning 50 this year.
Thank you. Thank you.[1338.76][1338.76](Laughter)
A lot of board members will come and celebrate with you tomorrow at the Ice Cream Social and meet our community too. The one feedback I do want to give you is I glanced at your website earlier this morning, and all the clubs and the events that you have up there, that's what, as a parent, you're looking for for a child, that rich educational experience. And I saw some of the pictures about Camp Elum, is it?
Yes.
And now I'm curious about Camp Elum, so.[1364.51][1364.51](Laughter) But it's, I appreciate how you keep your website updated. I always hear amazing things about Keller.
Thank you.
From, I don't know if Mr. Jeremiah Johnson is behind there. He is not there, but his child attends your school, I think.
Yes.
And her child, his child was here.
Yes.
Talking to the Board a couple of weeks back.
Yes.
So, thank you for what you are doing. I think Mr. Michael Williams too, his child attends your school, so he's also the-
Dr. Thurman's granddaughter.
Dr. Thurman's, yeah.[1396.51][1396.51](Laughter) So we got like some great things going on, and to me, it all starts with you, your leadership that you bring out there.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your leadership out there, and wish you the best as you go along.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.[1410.95][1410.95](Applause)
Moving on, public comments. Okay, let me start by, I want to clear a few things up as far as our public comments to ensure our community is aware of the process in place currently. In January earlier this year, the Board made a concerted effort to increase the opportunity to listen to more citizen comments. We combined all public comments to one item on the top of the agenda and set aside a total of 60 minutes for public comments. Since then, based on some feedback, we have made minor revisions. So here are the current processes for accepting comments. On the day of the board meeting such as today, you can start signing up for comments at 9:00 AM in the morning. You can do that online or here at the district offices in person. So we request through an honor system that you sign up for just yourself and not for others. Students come first. If you are a current student in D11, please check the box on the form, and we will recognize you, three or four students, at the beginning of the board meeting, so the Board can listen to students' comments first. Action, non-action, and general comments follow in that order. If you are signing up under action or non-action, make sure you reference the agenda item that you are talking about under action or non-action. All comments under each category are accepted on a first-come, first-come basis. If the same speaker signs up under multiple categories, I will most likely only call your name once, just so everybody gets an opportunity to speak. As we are working through this process, I am going to make some mistakes, like I did at the last board meeting, when I was pulling out a few speakers who had signed up multiple times, I ended up pulling a sheet or two that I should not have. So it's human error, and I apologize for that, and we'll get this process streamlined and perfected hopefully starting today. So as we work through this process, I appreciate your grace and understanding. So as far as the norms that is expected, each of you have three minutes for your comment. A clock will be displayed on the screen to help you through that. Please monitor the clock so you can get through your comments in that three minutes. Please be respectful of our speakers. The Board understands that you may want to show support or solidarity for a speaker. If you want to show support for a speaker, you can stand as the speaker is talking or use silent applause. Please direct your comments to the Board and not to anyone in the audience. Please treat every speaker the way you want to be treated if you are speaking up here with dignity and respect. Okay? With that, the first comment I have, and this is action item. So, Angelica Givler, Ms. Angelica Givler.
For those of you that do not know me, I am Dr. Angelica Givler. I have a bachelor's degree in elementary education, a master's degree in education, specifically in literacy, and a PhD in education with a specialization in reading literacy assessment and evaluation. I am here to talk to you about books, teacher appreciation, DEI, and SEL. You are looking at a picture of my classroom. I included this because it is important to see what a classroom looks like. As a literacy teacher, it is incredibly important that I provide my students with books to see and read. I use novel studies to align to our standards, social studies, science, and a variety of reading standards. The books Shelves and Baskets were paid for a little by Scholastic Points, some by Donors Shoes, but mostly from my pocket. As we approach teacher appreciation, I want you to think about that. I am not unique. Classrooms are paid for by teachers. This is my 13th year, and I am only paid for 10 of them. With a PhD, I make roughly $65,000 a year. D11 does pay more than other districts, but the average PhD in Colorado makes $176,000 a year, and the median income necessary for the area is $100,000. Remember this as you are bargaining and teacher appreciation approaches. Let's talk about these books on my shelves and how they support DEI. I brought some in as well. I have books that include characters of different cultures, races, religion, and from around the world. I include books that have characters that are hard of hearing, autistic, LGBTQ, and other ability levels. My books represent all students because all students come through my class. In a PhD course, I had to research diversity and literacy. I wrote, "One positive impact of diversity is that having multiple perspectives changes the way that people approach problem-solving." Phillips, 2014, discussed the fact that these different perspectives encourage participants to be better prepared and to be open to different ideas. The research also showed that diversity enhanced creativity and more innovative ideas. If this is encouraged in a literacy environment, students can expand their ideas and learn from each other. I have books that are specifically dealing with SEL. I have a wide variety because different issues arise each year, and I want to be able to support my students. This is what SEL looks like in a classroom. I am not counseling kids. I am helping to provide them with tools to deal with daily life. I have books on growth mindset, goal-setting, inspirational- on growth mindset, goal setting, inspiration, loving themselves, supporting others, not blurting out, being kind, dealing with anger, worry, grit, perseverance, and how to use your voice. When you use your voice, it says that others will stand with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Givler. Dr. Joe Schott.
Dr. Mel Parkham, Directors. Dr. Gledich, I'm Joe Schott. I'm President of the Colorado Springs Education Association. Tired, exhausted, done. We hear this so often about teachers. But while it's true in many, maybe most cases, it obscures something equally important as we approach Teacher Appreciation Week. Dedication, resolution, and strength. Teachers know why they choose to teach, and it's that purpose that keeps them going and keeps them focused. They believe in public education and its societal goal, recognizing that students are not sheet metal, getting shapes stamped out on them mechanically, and shouldering the public conception that teachers alone are independently responsible for every student outcome. When I say public education, I mean something specific. It's not tax money diverted to selective entities where boards are appointed, not elected, by the community, and that don't have to abide by rules and laws that fully public schools do. It's certainly not private organizations siphoning off public funds in the form of vouchers. Public schools require licensed teachers, for instance. They take all students, every single one, and meet them where they are. These are the students our D eleven teachers nurture and foster. Our purpose, public education's and teachers' purpose, is creating the environment for all our country's students to grow and become citizens empowered to shape their worlds. It is cultivating our students' skills and ability to engage the world from a position of strength. As the person the teachers of D eleven have chosen to represent them as president of their association, it is a source of pride for me that our staff has chosen this demanding and indispensable work, and chosen to persevere in this work together, regularly giving their discretionary effort on which public education depends for success. So when we hear about the great resignation of teachers who are forced from their chosen profession, it's good and heartening to recognize also the ones who are able to stay. And we thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Anton Shulsky.
Good evening. My name is Anton Shulsky. I'm here to talk about action item Teacher Appreciation Week. I'm completing my thirty-ninth year as a teacher in D eleven. And for the school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, I have the honor of serving as the president of the National Council for the Social Studies, an organization of some nine thousand social studies teachers. In my role as NCSS leadership since twenty nineteen, I've been interviewed by a number of news organizations locally, nationally, and internationally. Sometimes I'm identified as a teacher from Palmer High School in D eleven, sometimes not. I'm proud to represent D eleven in those interviews and have addressed topics such as the election of twenty twenty, the January sixth insurrection, teaching in a pandemic, the war in Ukraine, and of course CRT. Some people say that social studies teachers in particular are indoctrinating our students. One would think that social studies was the only subject being taught in schools. However, it is a well documented fact, there has been a marked decrease in social studies education, particularly at the elementary and middle schools across this country over the past two decades, unfortunately, right here in District Eleven as well. All of this was done in an effort to improve literacy test scores. However, there's a marked difference in teaching literacy and teaching social studies content. What we do know is that research, research shows that when social studies is taught as a distinct subject, literacy test scores increase. Social studies teachers in D eleven do amazing things on a daily basis in our classrooms. Elementary school teachers will teach unique social studies lessons because they have a passion for teaching social studies. Local coverage of work done in our middle schools with the, about the teaching of primary sources as a regular part of the curriculum. AP and IB teachers in high schools routinely have their students scoring at or above national and international averages on tests. And social studies teachers have sponsored local and state winners in mock trial competitions. Teachers in D eleven are proud to teach about the history of William Palmer. They are proud to teach about the first peoples who lived here. They teach about the hard history of labor strife in Colorado, including the tragedy at Ludlow. They teach about the incarceration of Japanese Americans at Camp Amache, and the heroic stand of Ralph Carr, the governor who dared to speak out against that incarceration. They teach about Fannie Mae Duncan and her work as a civil rights activist here in our community. They teach about the benefits of a capitalist system, as well as the impact that it has on those who have to work many jobs just to pay the bills. They teach about the geography of our city, and they teach about how living in some neighborhoods impacts that quality of life. They, they teach students about the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and Supreme Court cases such as Romer v. Evans. They teach students that their voices, all voices matter, especially if those voices, voices are traditionally marginalized, including BIPOC and LGBTQ students. And when it's time, we advocate for our students to register and to vote in elections. It's time for the public to stop denigrating my fellow social studies teachers in D eleven and spend some time in conversation with them. They'll find hardworking, skilled, passionate educators who should be honored during Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shulsky. That's the end of action comments. And now I have some gentle comments. No non-action. The first one, Michael Williams.
Good evening, District Eleven Board of Education. And before I start, thank you so much for all of our teachers that have a tireless job in our district and around the city every day. I'm sure you can guess what I'm talking about. Making statements on equity is great, but my parents told me when I was young, it's not about what I say, it's about what we do. You told us in board meetings, work sessions, and privately that equity is important, and you'd rather have less administration and more investment in classroom. You'd imagine my surprise a week ago, when I saw fifty-three teaching positions would not be funded next year, but our student to teacher ratio wouldn't change. A few problems with this. We have some schools in our district currently that have one teacher for thirty-five students. That's significantly over the state's most recent ratio of one to sixteen point six. If we want to attract more students, a great idea would be to have enough teachers staffed, so we can have smaller class sizes, so they're not stretched so thin that it's impossible to give every student a hundred percent. That's equitable. If, it helps with our goal of improving test scores. According to the Independent Nonpartisan Nonprofit Bookings Institute, class size does affect test scores. In one study in the US, students and teachers were randomly assigned to either a small class size of fifteen students, or a regular class size with twenty-two. Being in a smaller class increased student achievement four years later by an amount equal to three additional months of schooling. Our average class size is even larger than that large class size. What would it be with fifty-three fewer teachers? Walden University also notes that there's no direct correlation between longer school days and performance because of student fatigue. It also raises the cost and limits the time for activities that can increase performance. Another idea is to stop the disingenuous notion that we can't afford to fund the equity department. Replacing the superintendent costs approximately five hundred thousand with severance, interim salary, and paying for a search firm that doesn't include legal fees, which we haven't been able to find. That's approximately ten and a half teachers that could have been funded, the equity department four times over. And that doesn't include the rhetoric of not wanting to add administration, in actuality, adding a marketing coordinator for the district. How is marketing the successes going to overcome the poor student to teacher ratio, the dismantling of the equity department, and facilities that are lacking sorely compared to other districts? I'd suggest we come up with creative ways to solve our most pressing issues and not ignore great work because we didn't want to understand what's happening. Moving the equity work into curriculum and instruction, which has been mentioned several times, seems irresponsible. To have the department that has some of the most challenging work in our district to get students to perform, oversee work that doesn't fall under its purview, doesn't seem, it seems like an intentional death sentence for the work. PD alone isn't going to fix the problem. We have board members, while we have bought some board members who refuse to hold accountable, continue to, continue public rhetoric that disenfranchises significant populations of our students. Colorado cannot be serving all students as our Colorado State Board of Mission, vision reflects.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Your time is up. Mr. Josh Rumpel.
Good evening, friends. My name is Josh Rumpel. I'm the youth pastor at First Congregational Church in downtown Colorado Springs. Many of my students are D eleven students. The recent actions and words of some of the current board members have come to my attention, including articles written, social media posts shared, and the quote unquote mutual separation between Dr. Thomas and the school districts. I'm also aware that y'all have a statement that you strive to provide a quality education for the entirety of this diverse student population. But the recent actions and words of some of you have taken, particularly the dissolving of the Office of Equity and Inclusion, have convinced me that you do not particularly care about all students. I was raised in a religious tradition that did not approve of people in the LGBTQIA+ community. And I have witnessed the devastating effects that it has had on so many people, young and old alike. I've heard too many stories and known too many people that have been cast out, hated, and have died because of their gender identity, gender expression, or sexual orientation. Because of how people identify or who they love, they become victims of a belief system, of your belief system. I have worked in one of the most politically conservative environments, and I have personally witnessed the hate-filled rhetoric that leads to so many youth, our youth, to attempt suicide, too many of them becoming victims of it. The school board is creating an environment that will lean to the deaths of young people, and that is inexcusable. Some young people who are my students, who are, who students in this school district as well, are some of the very same people that in your ignorance or maybe your malevolence, you would see suffer. And I cannot allow that. So you have my attention to your school board. I and many people across D eleven, students, parents, educators, and more will be watching. And we will be working until there is a mutual separation between you and the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Michelle Warwick.
Thank you for listening to me this evening. Is that better? Okay, I'll lean in a little bit. Thank you for listening to me tonight. I guess I should have looked over the agenda more closely before I filled out my request for comment, because what I'm talking about is a non-action item. The district accountability meeting and the school accountability, I'm sorry, committees. I guess I would like to know more about those. I researched on the District Eleven website and saw that those are all elected positions, or I thought that they were elected positions. And I don't believe that the school that my kids are currently attending has either one of those or members on the, on the DAC. And I'm not sure that they have a SAC either. So I would like to know how I would go about getting that started in their school. If you guys remember the first time I spoke, I mentioned that I choiced my kids into District Eleven. And I would like to, I see that the, my intentions were not to keep my kids in District Eleven. It was just for the, this school year that I was, the end of the school year that I was going to keep them or put them in District Eleven. But since they've been there, I've seen potential for them to grow. I've also seen where the school has downfalls. And I've also seen where there is potential for myself to grow within the school and what I can contribute to the school. So I'm trying to find a good reason to keep my kids in District Eleven. And the lack of communication between the parents and the school is one reason why I would not want to keep them there. So I would like to get more information about the SAC and the DAC committees. So maybe I could get that, get people or parents, grandparents, whatever it may be, more involved in the school. And then I'd also like to invite you guys to the Adams Elementary Music Night, Art and Music Night, which is next Wednesday. I'm not sure if you guys have been made aware of that, due to the lack of communication from the admin at the school. But it's next Wednesday, May fourth, starting at five thirty. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warwick. Usually board members don't provide a response, but I think your comment deserves a response. First, to your invitation next Wednesday, unfortunately, we have a work session that evening at the same time. So there is a conflict, we would be out here at this point, at that point in time. Secondly, I would like you to introduce you to the gentleman sitting right in front of you, Mr. Lyman Kaiser. He knows everything that is there about DAC and school SACs. So if anybody can provide you all the information that you requested, it would be Mr. Kaiser out there. Okay. And all those are not elected positions, they are appointed positions. So Adams should have a school accountability committee. Please reach out to the principal out there to get additional information. But Mr. Kaiser would be able to provide information to you, too. So thank you for the comment. And Dr. Gledich will probably reach out to you, too, to provide additional comment. Mr. Tom Noonan. Okay, I think Mr. Noonan was the gentleman who was sitting in the front row, and he walked away. So yesterday, or was it day before, I lost track of time right now, when I was there, I just wanted to provide this feedback to you, Dr. Gledich. When I was out here in the district and when I was walking out of the building, Mr. Noonan approached me, and he said he is deaf and hearing impaired, and he asked for a sign interpreter at the board meetings. And I don't know if that is something that we've done in the past, but I don't know if Mr. Noonan was here to talk about that, in any case. So thank you for, that's all the comments I have. And we had an hour allotted for comments, and I had six or seven comments today. So thank you, guys, for being here this evening, sharing your thoughts and comments. The board appreciates hearing from you. Your feedback helps us better do our work. And then, as I mentioned previously, if you check the box, asking a district administration or a board member to contact you, someone from administration will follow up and contact you. Moving on to the next item, special reports. And first under that is board member reports. And I look to my board colleagues. Director Bankus, you're starting off. Lead off.
I would, I would like to make sure that as we approach teacher appreciation as a spotlight, that as a former teacher, I still have my teaching license. My colleague to my right is teaching experienced, and my colleague to my left is currently in the classrooms as well. We know from morning till night, from Sunday to Sunday, and even after I retired, four o'clock on Sunday afternoon, still genders that, oh, what am I doing tomorrow? And we know, I know, and our board knows, that teachers work, and our ESP and the classrooms and our school personnel work each day, every day. We are public education. The doors open. We take everyone. And as professionals in our field, we take that obligation, that duty, and that honor to provide and to learn what we need to learn in order to make sure that our students are getting the best educational opportunity. As I sit on this board, my duty and obligation is to give the support, and to be aware, and to be engaged, so that I know what goes on in the classroom each and every day. Seems like we are, I'll speak personally, so for me, either it was before COVID or after COVID. So before COVID, I was still in the classroom, still every day, still working with kids, and I would still like to be there. COVID hit, and I'm now on the board. And so now my obligation is to work with our executive team. And I'm looking at Sherri over there, our interim deputy superintendent, as well as the others who strive every day to be able to give the support that's necessary for our kids to get a quality education, to give our teachers the support that they need. And I hope that if nothing else, this board sends out the message of how important we think those of you who are in the classroom every day with our kids have the most important job. You shape the future, and our job is to help you do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bankus, couldn't agree with you more. Dr. Bankus couldn't agree with you more. Director Juggins.
So three things for today. First off, Ms. Bankus, Director Mopakam, and myself were able to attend Coronado High Schools last week. We had the invitation to go celebrate a piece of the USS Arizona being presented to be housed at that campus. Oh, we got a picture.
I came prepared.
Hey, you're ready, you're ready. What a great event. The Stratton family's there. The, let's see, the young lady to the left, her grandfather, actually, the two young ladies to the left, their grandfather was the one that fought that day on D-Day in Hawaii. And so his story and his sacrifice, a very incredible story, they're making a movie, I heard, so be looking for that. But they left this remnant here of, which you can see on the kind of bottom right on that table, that's a piece of the USS Arizona that will be housed in Colorado, in Coronado's campus, and we just appreciate the Stratton family for choosing D-11 to host that, and it was a well-received ceremony by the student body and the whole gym. Everybody did a very good job in respect of the flag and the history of World War II, so we appreciate that. Secondly, our school departments, as we mentioned earlier, received cookies this week. Was able to go out and deliver a few of those myself today. It was just so nice to be able to visit schools, greeted by friendly faces at every campus, and although, although it could have been just because I was carrying a box of Grandma's cookies, but all kidding aside, the schools are so wonderful and doing great work. Some schools, you know, mentioned being tired, and we heard that, I think, in some of our teacher reports and during comment, and we know that, we hear that, we see you, and we thank you, and so hopefully the cookies went down well with you. Lastly, as many of you know, we're in negotiations with, the interest-based bargaining with our union and meet and confer with our ESP and exec pros. I've read a few of the union Pulse newsletters recently, especially during negotiations this year, and I'm concerned with the tone and purpose in which these letters are being written to its readers. While both sides are actively trying to come to a mutual agreement during negotiations, these letters are being shared with me, shared with my main concern of an us-versus-them mentality, which is unhealthy for any organization's success. It's also frustrating that the union Pulse is trying to sway opinion on these issues while we're in negotiations, in the middle of them, it makes it a little bit difficult, as the board is not allowed to do that. Let's see, I'll see my place. The Pulse newsletters seem to be pitting the school board against the union and teachers, dividing the board from teachers, and making it seem like we are not in this fight together for the good of our staff, kids, and the district's future. It's this type of tone and rhetoric that will not only hinder negotiations but this district's success. Also concerned that we have had union representatives in buildings further sowing division within their building, causing that building's culture to fracture, forcing staff to sometimes pick sides, and undoing years of hard work that that admin or that principal has had in those school sites, that they've worked really hard to cultivate. These types of actions are, in my mind, unprofessional, and for any organization, whether it be public or private, should not be tolerated by our principals, our EDSLs, and the district, and doesn't align with our strategic plan, mission, or vision for D-11. It's my hope that the CCA would condone these actions, as we are mutually working towards the success of the children and to take care of our staff, but from what I can see at this time, they are not doing very well in serving our D-11 community.
Thank you. Director Loma.
Last week, before I left for my trip, I was able to go to the facilities down there and meet with the bus drivers, and I was amazed at how they do it, even the secretaries. Everybody has a CDL, and they're trying to make do with very little, and they don't have enough drivers, and really, we don't have enough teachers. I think somebody mentioned that we don't want to fund teachers. No, we want to fund teachers, we just can't fund them because we can't find them. I think we had, we're 51 short right now, something like that, in the neighborhood, so it's not that we don't want them, we just can't find them. And if we found them, if you know them, set them down, we're going to hire them. We're looking for a bunch more, and that's really the problem. But going back to facilities, I liked going there. It took me back in a previous lifetime, before I was, became a preacher of the gospel. I worked at Santa Clara University, and I was responsible for all the equipment there. So I went back there with the techs for the, for the heating and the plumbers and all my guys, and I just felt good. But one thing I noticed, that the longevity of all those individuals, like, they've been there a long time. I think the one gentleman over the distribution had been 41 years. And so I'm talking to these guys, I'm, my goodness, and this guy, 30, this guy, 20, one guy's getting retired, and I was just amazed at that, the longevity of those gentlemen. It just caught my attention, and also the staff there with the bus drivers. So that tells me they like what they're doing there, so I was really blessed by that. So I just wanted to mention that, and I'm really concerned for our facilities, you know, where our buildings are aging, like me, they're getting old, right? And it's a lot of work to keep them going, but they have a plan for Mitchell, that they're going to take care of that, and they're divvying out all the plans that they had. And so I was very impressed by their professionalism and their expertise.
Thank you. Director Daniels.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, we spent a great time at Taylor Elementary on Tuesday, yesterday, February 26th, and they had their art program for the night. It was wonderful seeing the families and the kids come out and all of the different projects they completed. I have to acknowledge Ms. Miller, Brenda Miller, for participating in the talent show. She did a great job performing with the students and dribbling balls. That was really a nice skill set. And yes, thank you to Ms. Kim Gilbert, the principal, Ms. Sarah Miller, who also invited me to attend, and I was really grateful to be there. Looking forward to Keller, as well as I believe Bartina's, isn't that tomorrow night as well? So keep up the great work, and thank you again for including us.
Thank you, Director Daniels, and I'll echo your comments about Taylor Elementary School. I was out there, and I saw some wonderful work that our students had done, and I want to share some pictures, but I'll wait to a later point in time. Director Art.
Thank you. Yes, Taylor had some amazing art, and right after that, Spark Online Academy had a little virtual art show, and they also have some amazing talent within their students. And I'm sure there's probably other schools we just don't know about, and thank you for the invitation for Adams. Sometimes, sometimes this job gets in the way of being out there in the community. I also wanted to mention, Doherty had a play recently that was very thought-provoking and enjoyable. They have a choir concert tomorrow as well at 6:00, if anyone's available, and you will probably get an invitation from Mr. Reed about another short play, which is with their special education students, and that one's, I don't know the topic of this one, but it's usually quite enjoyable as well. And speaking of Doherty, the Corvette Club of Colorado Springs donated funds to Doherty and to Odyssey Echo, and they brought their Corvettes down for a show. The funds will specifically support the automotive programs, and I got to go and sit in a Corvette. It was, it was kind of enjoyable, I have to say, including the economy car, they got 36 miles to the gallon, which is pretty exciting. Anyway, I hope the community will continue to visit our schools. Taylor, when I spoke to Principal Gilbert today, she specifically mentioned the arts, the art is still up, so if the photos don't do it justice, then people should definitely stop by and check it out in person. Thanks.
Thank you, and I will finish with my comments out here. I want to provide a couple of updates to our community, and the first thing that I want to start with is our search for a new superintendent. The application window for accepting applications closed on April 20th. We received applications, we accepted applications for about a month. The search firm informed the board earlier in the week that they have received 35 applications, 35 potential candidates, who are interested in being the next leader for District 11. In addition, the, the, the search firm contacted several stakeholder surveys, and this included employee groups, parents from each quadrant of our district, students, we had a specific survey set aside for students. DAC, District Accountability Committee, participated in it. So in all, I think there was 10 different stakeholder groups that participated. Over 750 online respondents responded back to the survey. All of it was captured in a comprehensive report, and the report is available for the public on the D-11 website. If you go to the front D-11 website, there is a link for the superintendent's search, so everything is posted out there. All open, transparent communications with our community as promised. The next step in the process, based on the stakeholder feedback and a careful review, vetting process, the search firm will narrow down the 35 candidates to about 10 or 12 strong candidates for District 11, and the board will review these applications on May 2nd in an executive session. Possibly follow that with another executive session on May 6th, so we are going to be busy next week with potentially three different meetings, one on May 2nd, one on May 6th, and a boardwork session sandwiched on May 4th. After those two executive sessions, we hope to announce the finalist for the superintendent position, and that could be anywhere from two to four candidates, two to four finalists. So I've talked to board members individually, and everybody has expressed enthusiasm and excitement in finding the next potential leader for our district. Stay tuned, we need your feedback and input as we go down this path, so we will keep you informed in a timely fashion as we go down this process. So everything will be posted either on the D-11 webpage or through board communications directly to you. So that's the update that I have on the superintendent's search process. The other thing that I want to, I mean, I've been interacting with some parents and teaching staff at various schools, and one of the subject matter, and this has been covered even in the media, is the reduction of 53 FTE teachers. So I just wanted to provide some clarity around that. I've repeated that several times from the board diars. District 11 has 4,200 fewer students than we had four years back. So considering we were in the midst of COVID over the past couple of years, we did not do any kind of course correction for the reduction in the number of students. No staff was, the staffing reduction did not take place over the last couple of years. So we have 4,200 lesser students in our district with the same staffing allocation as we had pretty much three or four years back. So we have several classes right now with 14 to 20 students at the elementary level, okay? At secondary level, most of our schools are below the approved staffing formula. Granted, there are always exceptions to that. Some schools or classrooms are at 25 or more students. I think Citizen Comment referred to that earlier this evening, but those are more the exceptions than the rule. If you go to our classrooms, our classrooms are at 15 to 20 students at the elementary level, maybe 25 students. So admin was thoughtful, deliberate, and very cautious when they recommended to the board the reduction to the staffing allocations. What I want to stress also is, the loss of 4,200 students could have translated into a much larger number of staffing cuts, and it didn't. We did not want to, we want to provide the schools the flexibility to have to an additional FTE or two FTEs, so they can keep the class sizes as small as possible. So it was intentionally, it was intentional to keep the staffing reductions to a minimum, and these staffing reductions are not going to result in teachers losing their jobs. That is because several of our schools already have teacher vacancies. That combined with impending teacher retirements, I do not anticipate, or very few, if any, teachers are actually going to be let go. Teachers may move internally from one school to another school, but even that, the admin wants to keep it to a minimum. So class sizes at our school for the fall will be at or below the board-approved staffing formula. That's a discussion the board had with Dr. Gledich earlier this evening. So the feedback that we provided Dr. Gledich was that to act promptly if a school enrollment comes way above projection in the fall, and to make sure that the staffing allocations to those schools are immediate, and it is not going to happen in the middle of September or October. We heard loud and clear that the past couple of years, that has happened. The feedback is, let's do it promptly. If we have clear data that indicates that a school is well above student projections, let's assign that. And the last thing I want to say, we also talked to Dr. Gledich about the ESAR funding, that's the federal funding, and that could potentially provide additional teachers to our schools, and it is one of the line items that is being addressed out there, and Dr. Gledich is going to consider that. All to say to our community that our classrooms are going to be small in the fall. We are going to have rich educational experiences for our students, just like what we saw with the Keller Elementary kids that came in front of us. So if you have additional thoughts, feedback to us, please reach out to us. The board is always willing to listen. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is, we don't have superintendent's report. Okay. Legislative Vachanta. Dr. Gledich will introduce Mr. Gustafson and Karen Wick.
Glenn, you want to come forward and provide the board an update? We're hoping that you can say something that's positive, that you, you always seem to come up and you say, "Board members." Remember, we don't have, but what can you say tonight?
Oh, the weather is wonderful. No, if Kathy could pull up Karen. She'll do that. We do have a school finance act, which we were on pins and needles waiting for, and it actually was relatively great. We're so excited to get that. We also got additional special needs funding for our students. Of course, all this is still in the hopper. It's not done yet, they haven't voted on these bills yet, but we're making progress, they're working our way through the session, and we're excited we can finally really start talking numbers. In terms of District 11, the school finance run that we received from the Colorado Department of Education that came out the day after the bill was introduced, so many, many thanks to our friends at Colorado Department of Education, we actually came out about $120,000 better than we had forecasted. So considering it's a $300 million operating budget, to only be off by $120,000 is pretty good, and it was to the good side, not the bad side, so we were thrilled about that. And so now we could proceed with our budget development, which Laura has already begun working on, and we'll be able to put those pieces together. We are going to include the special, the additional special needs funding into the budget development that you will receive in late May, so that we can have that conversation. And Kathy, are we?
Yeah, the studio, Kathy was going to do it.
I could tell a joke.
Are we waiting for Ms. Wick? Do you want to take a question? Okay.
So I'm, I'm a little confused. I, I thought you said two things. One, the school funding and the special ed needs budget is formalized, but it's not voted on, so is there, we can count on the money, but it's not voted on yet?
Yeah, and Karen can answer this better. They waited a long, long time to introduce the school finance act and the special education bill, because they were waiting on the long bill, the budget appropriation bill. The budget appropriation bill locked in the total amount for K-12. I specifically talked to Karen and said, "Hey, do you feel like as it goes through the process through education committee, that the school finance act or the special education bills will get significantly modified?" She didn't feel like it would, and since we were so close anyway, we're going to start to incorporate those into our budget development. But they haven't been voted on, and so we'll, we have to wait for that. And I'll turn it over to Karen, and by the way, last day of the legislative session is right around the corner, May 11th. I know Karen's got that on her calendar, so I'll turn it back over to you, Karen.
It looks like she's joining us from the Capitol.
Can you hear me okay? I am in the Capitol tonight.
If you can increase the volume.
A little bit louder.
I think Kathy is also working on it, to see if she can.
All right. I will, I will try to talk a whole lot louder. Yes, I am calling in from the Capitol tonight. We are, we are counting down the days, but the days are just getting longer as we still have a ton of bills and many big issues to work through. As Glenn said, the school finance act is halfway through. It has made its way through all of the committees and the votes on the floor of the House. It has been introduced into the Senate, and we're just waiting for it to get scheduled. I believe it should be up- I believe it should be up tomorrow, which means that it's getting ever so closer into getting done. Our understanding is that there are no changes to the school finance act that anyone is anticipating going through the Senate. So if that is the case, and we can get it quickly moved and through, we shall soon see it on the governor's desk. We try every single year to get the bill done before May. It is not often accomplished. It usually gets, is usually one of the final bills that are hanging around as we vote it through. But as Glenn shared, the school finance act is a real positive thing, and having been through many school finance acts, it's always nice when we can say it's a positive thing. It increases on average per people funding by two hundred and fifty-two dollars. That's about, brings the average amount to seven thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars per people. Overall, it, you know, the best part of this school finance act is the commitment to reducing the budget stabilization factor. This budget stabilization factor has been now in effect for over a decade, and it is, it's one of the things that I know we have worked very hard to reduce through many ways, and I will be talking about ballot issues in a little bit as well, too, for more efforts to reduce that. But we're seeing with this school finance act, a reduction from five hundred million deficit to schools being down to three hundred and twenty-one million deficit, with money being kept in the reserves to hold that budget stabilization factor constant for next year as well, too, for the next school finance act. That's something that the legislators have really been trying to make sure happens each year, is that they can provide some consistent level across multiple years, and with inflation going up so dramatically high, they put some money in the school finance fund to be able to hold it and make sure that there was resources available. So if inflation doesn't increase as much as we're anticipating next year, there may be some extra dollars to even reduce that three twenty-one million down a little bit, but that's yet to be seen. For D eleven, as Glenn shared, this really means about two hundred and sixty-five million that we're going to be seeing coming down to the district, about a little over nine hundred, nine thousand four hundred per people on average. Coupled with the special education funding bill, this bill now is, is through the Senate, and it's almost completely through the House. It's a sixty-five million dollar, I'm sorry, no, the wrong one. It's really a critical bill. If for D eleven, you know, it really works to finally put special education funding back where it belongs. We already know that it's not fully funded at the federal level, and we've never had it fully funded at the state level as well, too, leaving districts in a place where their budgets have had to be making up for special education funding. So for D eleven, we're going to see about a thirty-five percent increase in sped dollars coming down. That's almost two million more than what we've had beforehand. I think overall, this is one of the bills that I think is so important for K-12, is to really see that commitment coming down to our special needs students overall and finally getting those dollars. So we're excited to have that in there. It is through the Senate. It's being debated in the House. We should soon see it on the floor, which means hopefully by the end of April, we're going to be, have some significant dollars committed to K-12. The other big piece that's going on that's also a funding component, you know, in the past, we had talked a lot to you about mill levy equalization and mill levy override equalization. It's been a hot debate about what do we do for school districts that even if they are able to raise their mill levies, that doesn't generate enough revenue, or that they just don't have the capacity to go do it from their voters. So after a few tries, we finally are getting Senate Bill 202. It's a, it's basically a state match program for mill levy overrides to really encourage districts that haven't yet raised their mill levy override. So this is the dollar that, the funding that comes outside of the formula, not the local share for any kind of funding, but the added dollars. I know D eleven, we all went for a mill levy override not long ago. That was for teacher salary and other updates overall, but it was really impactful for getting D eleven back on, on a really good track for being a good funder for their teachers. This bill, what this really works is it creates a program that for those districts that qualify, and you know, there's a whole list of qualifications that has to happen, that if they go raise some mill levy override, it can provide a limited amount of match money from the state. So if you think back to the best program that we had, the Building Excellence Schools Today program, where if districts went to the ballot to go raise revenue and do bonding efforts for building of buildings, repairing of big things, the states would come in and match some of those dollars. It's a similar concept in that, in that way, and we think there's about seventy-two school districts that would qualify under this, and that could change over time. There's a model that Case has put together to be able to help really ensure and identify what those school districts are. So there's more to come, but I think that's another good promising thing for many of our rural school districts to be had, and I think overall helps with some of that commitment. On the flip side, though, when we start looking at what's coming down the ballot, you know, there's several property tax ballot measures that are, are being filed and being debated and being discussed over our title board process. You know, one is capping property tax growth rate at a fixed rate. Another one tries to reduce property taxes, like not having statewide ballot measures to reduce property taxes and really having local levels decide that. Another one would raise revenue by taxing luxury homes valued over two hundred million. And then there's another one that tries to take some of the Tabor revenue over into an affordable housing fund overall. So there's a lot. One of the things why we're watching these very carefully, as you know, is that changes in property tax first and foremost has a direct impact on school district funding because those property taxes go to some of the first things that build up local share. So if we are seeing efforts to really cut property taxes at that local level, what that means is either the state is going to have to backfill when local share drops, or we're going to start seeing some of those cuts to be happening, or growth back in the budget stabilization factor. And so in those things overall, it really has a dramatic impact on our school districts. Right now, our understanding is that legislative leadership and folks in the governor's office are trying to work and negotiate a deal to figure out, is there a way to fund a temporary reduction of property tax, but backfill it in some way, especially so it doesn't have negative impact on schools or local municipalities, and as a measure to go, help kind of hold off these property tax reduction ballot measures. It's not worked out. Conversations are going on, but I think that's the intention of how do we work those pieces out. And so that's one thing that we're critically watching. The other big pieces that we know are coming that could have an impact of K-12. You know, earlier in this year, we talked about Senate Bill eighty-seven. This has been the piece of legislation that would do universal funding for universal meals and provide the funding for it. The ballot, the price tag for providing free meals for all students regardless of their income level really comes in closer to about well over a hundred million dollars. And with all, despite the fact of having a whole lot of revenue coming into our state, it's something that just hasn't been moving, and we've been waiting to see what the federal, what the feds really do because they're looking at reauthorizing the program. We've been having it for the past few years because of the pandemic. We don't know if it's going to be able to continue. Lawmakers that are working on this are really trying to see, can we do a one-year holdover to be able to help carry through before the feds reauthorize? But in the meantime, some of the advocates behind this bill have been putting forward ballot measure titles that we're starting to see pop up that would provide funding, and this would be by limiting deductions that you all take when you file your taxes. So you know how most folks take the standardized deduction levels, looking at some of those deduction levels based on a certain threshold of however much income that you make, to be able to say anything that is in there. If we can limit those deductions, we can identify revenue and then drive that over to help fund schools to provide universal meals. There's a long way to go before those proposals are known, if they really are even have a shot at collecting signatures, but that's some of the work that's going on. The last piece, and then I'll, I'll stop for a moment, is there's a ballot measure that partners from Great Education Colorado are working. As I mentioned before, there's, you know, the effort with affordable housing to see if you could divert some of the Tabor revenues, Tabor refund revenues that would be going forward. Great Education is really looking at, can they steer part of the expected Tabor refunds that the state is going to, that would happen over the next few years and have that go into school funding? So right now, we think that if this measure, if this ballot measure were to go forward, it could generate anywhere between eight hundred and twenty million to one point one billion overall for schools. And it's productive because it doesn't actually raise taxes in any way. It takes things that would otherwise be going back via the Tabor refund mechanisms and then really prioritizes them from schools, and doesn't, doesn't take all of them. And so I think while this is the fifth attempt since two thousand and eleven, and I was involved in some of those ones before, but it is the fifth attempt from two thousand and eleven to raise revenue from schools. I think the thing that we're, we're really looking at overall is that while we're excited about the BS factor getting lower to three hundred and twenty-one million, the challenge really is that we've seen a cumulative loss of over ten billion dollars to schools from the BS factor over that point in time. We also know that, you know, between now and two thousand and twenty-five, the state is expecting to return at least four point seven billion dollars to taxpayers via, via the Tabor refunds. This year, I'm sure you've seen the news already that sometime in the summer, individual filers should be able to receive about four hundred dollars back, while joint filers will see about eight hundred dollars back. I think what Great Ed and advocates for K-12 funding are really doing is working to see how do we capitalize on that to really redirect it overall. This is the first time we're seeing checks going out the doors. Many times before, it's triggered other items like the earned income tax, and there's some other things in the list under Tabor that can happen before checks actually get sent out, but I think that folks are really feeling promising and positive about this. So we'll see as this develops. Again, it hasn't been finalized at the title board. It would still need to gather signatures, but there's a lot of hope for it. Overall, what I would say is like with what we're looking at is seeing, you know, between at least four more years of Tabor refunds with our current revenue. We saw a lot of spending that's happening this year with the state budget, but we also saw a lot of saving with the state, and so this is one thing I think to really hit home, to think about what it means for K-12 funding. And there's a lot of money that both the Joint Budget Committee and the governor's office worked to put into reserves. We are sitting on about two billion dollars in state reserves that they're really using to help maintain their funding levels over the next few years, and that's why you see that strong commitment to maintain the budget stabilization factor at three hundred and twenty-one million and how they're going to go do it. A lot can still happen between now and then. I think we kind of know the economy in Colorado has been rebounding. We're seeing some good things, but ballot measures could change that. We could see another recession. We know what the big housing costs and prices, all of those are affecting consumers' choices and what we may see coming from voters. So I think there's a lot to be determined, but there is positive news for K-12, and we have fourteen days left in this session, ten working days, so I think we're all back here on Saturday today to go debate some big bills. So a lot is, it sounds like a small number of days, but a lot can happen in that short period of time. I'll pause there for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wick. The first ten or fifteen minutes, we had a hard time hearing you, so I request that you repeat everything that you said for the first ten or fifteen minutes. I'm just kidding. Board members, any questions? Any questions, comments? Director Roth.
Thank you. I think it's just important, a lot of what was difficult to hear was the impact of the ballot questions that are proposed and the cuts in property taxes and how that would impact us as a school district. So I think we might want to hear about that again in the future as we see those come forth, and that might be a legislative update or just a ballot update in the future for us. And I should add, if anybody's interested in supporting the effort for the Amendment sixty-three, greateducation.org has petitions, and people can sign up to get those out and about and start collecting signatures. That's the one with the Tabor that would take that little tiny bit of the Tabor refund for education. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions at this point in time? Thank you, Ms. Wick. Thank you for that update, and we look forward to talking to you again in two weeks' time, and by the time, hopefully, the session has ended and you will be able to wrap it up, and you don't have to spend your evenings at the Capitol. So thank you.
Thank you, board, and I look forward to talking to you again.
Thank you. Moving on, adoption of consent items. Director Roth, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education adopt all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are E two, approval of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. E three, approval of the personnel recommendations for April twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. E four, approval of policy JJ IB interscholastic sports. And E five, approval of policy EJ service animals. Second.
Moved and seconded, and as it has become practice now, I'm going to defer to Dr. Gledich for a minute so he can introduce a new principal that we have hired under personnel recommendations the board is approving today. Dr. Gledich.
Thank you, board members. This evening, I'd like to introduce you to Thomas Copley. Thomas, can you stand? Thomas Copley is, after you approve, will be the principal at Scott Elementary School beginning the next school year. However, I have a feeling he will also be visiting Scott Elementary School over the next several weeks to meet the community, to meet the children, and to meet the staff. And welcome to the principalship, sir. Thank you.
And thank you for waiting here for the past hour and a half so you can be introduced. So thank you, appreciate it. And I live in the Scott community, so I'm sure I'll run into you quite, quite often out there. Kathy, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. I?
Aye.
The ayes have it that the motion has been adopted, and congratulations. Action items, contract awards, there are no contract awards. Budget transfers, appropriations, and FTE approvals. Vice President Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item F two?
I move that the Board of Education approve the general fund contingency transfer request of three hundred and five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to cover the FOTC custodial funding shortfall in accordance with policy DBJ.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Dr. Gledich, this is a new item?
Yes, sir, it is, and Terry Seaman is here with us tonight. Basically, this budget transfer will allow the continued use of overtime to partially fill the void that's created by our current vacant custodial positions. I believe that Facilities is asking funding of about three hundred and five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars would be expected for the remainder of the year. The salary and the benefit savings, though, of regular positions will easily cover this account shortage at the end of the year. So it's not requesting new dollars, it's requesting the transfer of dollars to cover the overtime cost of our custodial vacancies. Good evening. Can you add anything, or did I miss anything?
No, sir, you pretty well covered it. Just a couple points of clarification. So I'm Terry Seaman, I'm the executive director for Facilities Ops and Transportation. Just to give you a snapshot of where we're at on our manning, in the custodial and building management realm, we have two hundred and nine point five FTEs. As of the first of April, we had a hundred and fifty-two and a half, okay? And every one of those is a custodial vacancy. To handle the custodial gaps, schools submit augmentation requests to the facilities department. We fill those shortfalls normally through our custodial support team. We've only had two out of ten positions, though, filled for almost the entire year. So last fall, because we recognized the need, superintendent authorized a contingency transfer of a hundred thousand dollars where we've been able to pay for two to three custodial to augment through a contract. Additionally, we've had other district employees step up and work additional hours and earn additional pay to do custodial work. And these, these employees have been compensated as well. You know, when, when we finally get down to overtime, when there's an eight-hour gap position, we authorize four hours of overtime, okay? The end result is that through this overtime, our custodial staffs on their backs, we have kept the schools clean and open. To date, and this, this number is through the end of February, that, that total is two hundred and forty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars of expenses already incurred. This does not include overtime in the month of March because we pay overtime in one month in arrears. So right now, we've incurred two months of overtime salaries that we have yet to see I estimate that the total bill for our overtime this year will be about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To put that into perspective, in the three preceding To put that into perspective, in the three preceding years, in total, we spent about $210,600 in three years. This year, we will double the last three years of effort. You know, and as Dr. Gledich said, you know, we've got a lot of budget fund balance surplus because of lapsed salaries. We're at 61% expensed year-to-date on salary and benefits for the custodial staff. We should be at 75%. So that's where we get the $1.45 million of so-called savings. And that is the money that we can target to pay for this overtime bill. Are there any questions that I can fill?
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Any questions or comments or concerns? Director Jorgensen?
No questions, but a comment. Thank you for your work and to your crews. I'm sure they're cleaning right now, and the last thing on their mind is to watch a board meeting, but would you please pass down our thank you and gratitude to them?
I will do.
For working hard. Appreciate it.
And some of the cookies we have been distributing out there, Director Jorgensen has been...
Yeah, thank you for those. We got those today, and we did circulate notes to the entire Facilities and Transportation staffs, and we've been distributing those cookies. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions to Mr. Seaman? So, I just had a comment to make. It highlights the challenge we are having in the current job market. Right now, we have about 60 custodial staff vacancies at the school level, another eight vacancies at the central-level custodial team. So we are understaffed. It is a competitive job market there, and now we are paying our staff overtime to cover additional hours, if I understood you right.
Yes, sir.
So I know we are in the middle of negotiation with employee groups, but this current situation calls for exploring options of a higher starting salary for our custodial staff so we can attract and retain more employees. I'm sure that's something that will come up in negotiations as we go forth. And the other thing that I want to mention is that we do have, the Board approved a hiring and retention bonus earlier this year, and that is applicable for our custodial employees too, new custodial employees that sign up under that.
Yes, sir.
And I know that is a payment of about $2,500 in two installments.
Yes, sir.
So are we marketing that prominently to attract new custodial staff?
We are, and I believe that HR is as well in the recruitments.
Okay. Let's get the word out, and if I can do anything from this Board, so people that are watching at home, there is a $2,500 bonus. Mr. Seaman is looking for custodial staff, and if you are looking for a job and that is something that you find attractive, please reach out to Mr. Seaman and Facilities Department. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Director Loma.
Well, I just want to mention, you didn't mention the bus drivers. I thought you were short. How many drivers?
Let's see, we have 112 authorizations. Last count, we were at 77.
And somehow, they're getting it done, which was really, I talked about you earlier, and they're getting it done with not enough people. And so, yeah, you guys are doing your own work over there, and I enjoyed my time with you guys when I was out there. Let them know.
Thank you, sir. I will.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, Kathy, roll call please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. Ay?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. Moving on to the next item, Secretary Packers, can you please make the motion for action item F3?
I move that the Board of Education approve the general fund contingency transfer and the FTE authorization request of $1 million to cover the expansion of the before and after school programs in accordance with the policy DBJ, with the goals of providing a safe learning and working environment, communicate and engage frequently with our customers, ensure financial integrity with transparency, and build strong relationships.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this is a new item, Dr. Gledich, and Ms. Callback is here too.
Yes, Board members, this is the item that came out of one of our board work sessions as we were working through the preliminary budget development assumptions. And tonight, Sherry Callback is coming forward requesting you to approve that general fund contingency transfer to support the creation of after-school programs at several of our schools. One item on this that changed, which I believe we sent you an email about, is instead of doing six, we're requesting the funds to cover seven. And so that would be something that would be new, and I'm sure Sherry would have some additional information for you as well. But we worked rather quickly and got the commitment from principals, and I think we'll be able to serve school communities upon your approval. Sherry?
Thank you, Board of Education and Dr. Gledich. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you tonight about this opportunity for our students. At the request of our Board of Education, we have created a plan to expand the after-school enrichment programming that currently exists at Monroe and Twain Elementary Schools. This programming is offered at little or no cost to families. I worked with the EDSL team to identify schools that could receive greatest benefit from an expansion of our current enrichment programming. Collaboratively, we identified schools in each of the quadrants of the district as well as one central location. Each of these schools has lower capacity utilization percentages, is near a boundary with another district except for the one central location, and is not being recommended as a pathway site. We are intentionally trying to spread the wealth. The identified schools are Trailblazer in the northwest quadrant with a 42% capacity utilization, Adams in the southwest quadrant at 68% utilization, Audubon is our central location with 53% utilization, Freedom in the northeast quadrant, 55% utilization. We are looking at a combined program for Midland and West Elementarys, and we're working through an opportunity to offer the program at one side or the other. We haven't determined which yet, but it would be available to students at both schools with a transportation piece for the students moving from one school to the other. So still in a little bit of work on that, but we will be able to solve for that, I believe. Those schools are in the southwest quadrant. Midland has 52% capacity utilization, and West Elementary is at 43%. Rudy in the northeast quadrant at 64% capacity utilization, and King also in the northeast quadrant at 60% capacity utilization. And of course, the programming already exists at Monroe and at Twain in the southeast quadrant. So again, all quadrants plus a central location. Principals at all of these schools have been presented with this opportunity and are excited to participate. We have commitment and writing from every one of these principals. A budget request is being presented tonight, and that budget request within the $1 million allows for a $142,850 budget per school for this program. That budget will fund staffing, supplies and materials, and field trip opportunities for participating students if approved. In May, I will be facilitating a meeting with all new enrichment programming school principals. At that meeting, the Monroe and Twain principals will share their experiences and learnings over the past several years, having led those programs now for a few years. The purpose of that meeting will be to support a successful launch at all of our new sites by learning from schools who are experienced. Additionally, I'd like to note that Chris Odom and I, along with Brigida in Rentals, have met with our vendor partners who currently provide paid daycare options at those schools. We want to ensure that we're able to maintain a positive relationship with these vendors and not negatively impact their business models. And so we're exploring some different options with each of them. We're a little early in the phases on that, but that work has begun. Dever and I also work together to create a press release for these programs, which is ready to be shared this evening if funding is approved. Dever and I also tentatively have our first interview with a news station tomorrow, who has reached out to us, seeing this on our agenda for this evening. And of course, she and I will work collaboratively to support schools in beginning their marketing efforts right away, and our new marketing director, once hired, will be instrumental in helping to market this program option to our families. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent Callback.
Thank you.
I was just wondering if we could talk a little bit about what those programs would look like for the broader community so they'll have a sense of what that means for them?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
We have titled these programs "Enrichment Programming Purposefully." They are designed to expand, enrich, deepen learning that students may start during their school day, but we don't always get every opportunity to include all of the fun learning activities that we would like in a six-and-a-half-hour elementary school day. And so our current programs offer pieces like Lego robotics, science experiments. They bring in our community partners, like zoo docents, to bring animals or opportunities to students at the school, as well as for students to do some after-school field trips to some of their sites. It is site-specific. Each one will look a little bit different depending on what students are interested in, their community partners, but it's very much intended to be fun in learning after school. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Do we have hours for those operations?
This is a little bit influx because we don't yet have the negotiated results of the 30-minute extension to the elementary school day. But our plan is to start this programming when school ends, whenever that might be, and run until, we are planning toward 5:30, which we hope would give working parents enough time to be able to pick up after their job ends and still do a pickup in the evening.
Thank you, Ms. Callback, and I appreciate that you stressed that this is fun educational opportunities for our kids.
Yes, sir.
Because sometimes, we talk about at the Board level, oh, it's all about reading, writing, and math. This is fun educational opportunities for our kids. Director Loma.
Well, I like the idea, but I also like the, because I'm, I want to know how this affects learning. I mean, not just at that point, but all learning throughout the day. So you could have good data points. I mean, you'll know what your students are doing now, and then after this program runs through, you can have data points to see if we should expand it. I hope we have to expand it, you know what I mean? And it works because that's the goal. That's the whole goal. So I really appreciate that. I was like, man, why didn't I have money to do it everywhere? But we don't have that ability sometimes. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we do plan to measure effectiveness, both in terms of enrollment at the school sites, and of course, we can measure impact on achievement as well.
I apologize. I was just curious if you could talk about the staffing. I know you're partnering with them. Does that mean we have two people per certain amount of students, or is it going to be? I would rather you share instead of me putting words in your mouth.
Certainly. I'm happy to. Each of these schools will be allocated an ESP employee whose role will be solely to facilitate the programming. So the paperwork, signing students up, answering parent questions about the programming, maintaining health forms for students who participate, all of those sorts of things. This is actually something we learned in our initial year at Monroe and at Twain. We ran into some challenges in terms of workload impact to the current office staff in those buildings, and we found that we really needed a dedicated facilitator of this programming option at each school. So that's a portion of the funding for the school. The other portion comes from extra duty pay for teachers and ESP in the building, or if we don't have enough interest in the school's own staff in schools that are close by, those teachers may be offered the opportunity to. So if you're a teacher who wants to work just on Tuesday afternoons in the programming, offering, for example, a Lego option for students, then that extra duty pay funds that as well. We don't have a specific ratio that we're looking at, but if we have 50 students in a program, we would have at least three adults on-site to supervise as well. You're welcome.
Thank you. Director Jorgensen?
From, let's see, if we do settle on the 30 minutes, that's 3 o'clock, 3 to 5:30. If I was a kid, I would be hungry. We kind of have some sort of food service snack or something like that for them when they're participating?
Yes, we will work with food services to make sure that we have at least snacks. I do know that Monroe, as part of their programming, at one point was able to offer dinner as well. Some of that is based on a school's free and reduced lunch percentage and the rules we have to follow there, but yes, they will get at least a snack.
Yeah, we had a, I remember having a grant at one point in time where we did, we had enrichment, and then we had from like 5 to 5:30 was like a little dinner before they went home. So, yeah, that would be great. And then, this is just a great opportunity that has nothing to do with, well, testing or scores or anything, but helps in aiding the day and giving students some time to be safe and learn something, and then giving parents a chance to finish up a day of work and not have to worry about where their kids are. So this is wonderful. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I don't see any other comments or questions from Board Directors out here, so I do have a couple of questions, and I will start with this piggybacking on what Vice President Jorgensen talked about. This is a need in our community too. It identifies a need in our community that we are, by this, we have over and over again stressed that District 11 is a declining enrollment district, okay? And I've served two years on the Board. This is my third year on the Board. We got to creatively think outside the box to solve the issue of declining enrollment. Otherwise, we are going to have trouble in future years to provide a healthy compensation for our staff. And right now, we are going through negotiations two years from now. If you talk to Glenn, we are going to be in trouble even providing steps and lanes. So it aligns with a need in the community and the board priority of increasing student enrollment. I'm glad, I'm excited for this. This is something that I've been advocating for, for two years, and to see this come to fruition at this point in time. Let's try something outside the box. And data shows that it has worked in Monroe and Twain, and we are not just jumping into this, expanding it to seven other schools. Monroe and Twain are at capacity, right?
Monroe and Twain's programs have been at capacity since they opened. Of course, I have to say, with some pandemic impacts at certain times.
Yep.
But yes, those programs have maintained capacity plus a waitlist in most cases.
Right. Yeah. So it either at least retains the students in our district or attracts more students to these programs. And we are targeting schools with considerably, schools which are considerably below capacity, and figuring out a way that we can attract more students in there. So you were talking about, a couple of questions I had on that FTE, the staffing. At Monroe and Twain, we have both before and after, don't we?
Yes.
Is that going to continue in that fashion out there?
Yes.
At before and after?
Yes.
And they start at 6:00 in the morning, something like that?
I believe they start at 6:30.
6:30.
Yes.
But probably the teacher is, the ESP staff is there at 6:00 in the morning?
Correct.
So since these programs are just after, do we still need a 1 FTE at each one of those locations, or could it be .6 or?
I believe we still need the 1.0. The before-school programs are minimally attended. At Monroe and Twain, they have a very small number of students, and so the workload for this person really does not come from the before-school programming. It comes from the 50 students and a waitlist that happen in the afternoons.
Okay.
And so I do believe that we need the 1.0.
The only feedback, you know, when I talk to some of our grandparents in the district, they are willing to work part-time if it is a half-time, you know, position as opposed to working eight-hour days, if it's only three-hour days. Maybe those are the parents that can do one day a week or something like that. Maybe those are the parents that can do one day a week or something like that at that school. So it's more attractive if it's not a full-time FTE job for them. But yeah, and then your capacity, you said, is around 50 students in each one of those programs?
Correct. Monroe and Twain have both set program limits at 50 students. We anticipate pretty similar program size at each of these schools. As we look through space available, those sorts of logistics, which is what we'll plan for at that meeting in May. And I'd be happy to update the board after that.
Yeah. So at Monroe and Twain, are these slots filled on a first-come, first-served basis?
They are.
So when you talk about kids are there on waiting list. So if a child student gets in, let's say at kindergarten, does that student continue in that after-day for all five years?
As long as they stay at the school.
As long as they stay at the school. So maybe it's an opportunity how to figure out, maybe it's, if there are students on waitlist, maybe we can explore options. How do we get those waitlisted students into those programs too? So I'm not sure what the thought process on that is. How do we get? Do we go at the beginning of every year and open it up again for all students to apply? I'm sure you guys will figure it out, but at least maybe if we keep some slots open for the kindergarten students that are coming in. So if this is an attractive option for parents who are entering that school at the kindergarten level. So if all the slots are filled and kindergarten parents cannot access it, maybe it's an opportunity to think about for you guys. And the last thing that I want to talk about is the marketing of this program. Parents are making decisions for the upcoming school year right now. So that's one of the reasons the board wanted to bring this up on the agenda today as soon as possible. So please get this word out to our community, whether it is going to be through the school newsletters or the school websites or social media. And thank you for doing the media interview tomorrow. I look forward to a positive news story about District 11 coming out tomorrow. So and maybe that, some of that money which you're talking about, 142,000 or something like that that you have at every school is earmarked for marketing that program in that community. So. That's all I have. With that, Kathy, roll call, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
With the ayes, the motion passes. And I look forward to opening up this opportunity for our community. We are, as I talked about, we are looking at various different options to get our students back into our district. So spread the word around. So if parents in those schools, and if this is successful a year or two from now, like what Director Loma was talking about, maybe we can expand it to all elementary schools. Thank you, Dr. Kledich. Do you have something to add?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was looking. Moving on, resolution 2022-38, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Director Ott, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for action item F4? Oh.
Thank you. Resolution 2022-38, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month for May. Whereas the month of May is set aside to honor the numerous contributions Asian American and Pacific Islanders have made to the United States. Whereas in 1977, Congress introduced a House resolution to proclaim the first 10 days of May as Asian Pacific Heritage Month, a celebration of Asians and Pacific Islanders in the United States. And in 1978, President Jimmy Carter signed a joint resolution designating this as the, as an annual celebration, which we now know as Asian Pacific Heritage Week. And whereas in 1990, May was chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States, which was on May 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10, 1869, in which the majority of the workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas in 1990, Congress voted to expand Asian Pacific Heritage from a week to a month-long celebration. And in May 1992, the month of May was permanently designated as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And whereas understanding Asian and Pacific Islander history is an important part of celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have endured and overcome hardship and heartache. In the earliest years, tens of thousands of Gold Rush pioneers, coal miners, transcontinental railroad builders, as well as farm and orchard laborers, were subject to unjust working conditions, prejudice, and discrimination. And whereas even in the darkness of the Exclusion Act and Japanese internment, Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have persevered, providing for their families and creating opportunities for their children. And whereas we acknowledge these Americans for their contribution to government, industry and commerce, agriculture, science, literature, music, and the arts, creating a better America despite ongoing prejudice and discrimination. And whereas the diversity of these groups includes Asian Indian, Bengali, Burmese, Cambodian, Chinese, Filipino, Guamanian, Hawaiian, Mong, Indonesian, Japanese, Korean, Lao, Malayan, Okinawan, Pakistani, Samoan, Thai, Vietnamese, and others. And whereas our Asian Pacific, sorry, Asian American and Pacific Islander students, families, staff, and community have made numerous contributions to School District 11. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Colorado Springs School District 11 that May 2022 is designated as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with appropriate instructional activities to recognize the countless contributions that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made and continue to make in helping our nation. And after that, I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2022-38, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
Moved and seconded. Board directors, any comments?
Well, I'm going to just comment for Ms. Onley over there. My script and my resolution numbers are different, which is, that's okay. But we want to make sure we get that correct in the motion. I just, part of our Taylor experience, for those of us who were at Taylor Elementary, was some students sitting and doing some Hawaiian dance. And so it is, you know, this is for May being celebrated, this resolution as this month, Heritage Month. But it is appropriate certainly to celebrate all of these cultures that we honor with these very specific resolutions to celebrate throughout the year. And I appreciate that many schools do. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Loma.
One of my duties, what I do, I have a rehab home, drug rehab home for men and women. And I operate, I help operate one in Asia. I go to, before the pandemic, I would go to Asia twice a year. Philippines, I've been to Palau, Guam, Indonesia. They don't have Indonesia in there.
What?
Did you have it? Maybe you didn't.
Yes, we do.
So many names, I didn't hear them all.
It's right there. I know.
And, but I have a tremendous heart for that part of the world. You know, going there twice a year for the last six years. And so, yeah, I tell, I have a reason, a couple of reasons why you should never go to the Philippines. Why? Because once you eat their food, you'll never be satisfied with American food. And once you get there, the people are so nice, you're not going to want to leave. And I always tell people that. And so when I was doing a master's program, I had to live out there for a little while to get a feel. And so, yeah, I have a great heart for that. And they have the biggest spiders in the world in the Philippines. It was a spider so big, I screamed. It was big in my hand on the wall. I don't know what it was. It scared the heck out of me. One of the Filipinos came in and he grabbed it with his hand. I'll never forget that. I go, brave man. Anyway, I just say that, but I have a heart for them. They do provide a lot to our country and to me personally. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Director Loma. Seeing no further comments, I'll just add a couple of comments from my side. Director Ott, you brought up this resolution last year, so thank you for bringing this up. And I'm glad to see it's back here again. And I belong to this heritage, I'm from Asia, this. And you should visit India sometimes and you should see, it's a tropical climate out there. So that's why you see those big spiders and lizards and snakes and all those things. So it goes back, what we keep repeating in D11, we are welcoming and inclusive of all heritages and cultures. We embrace diversity, and diversity is one of our strengths. By the board adopting this resolution, we bring attention to the Asian and Pacific Islander history and the contributions made by Asian Americans in our nation's history. So I'm proud and support over this resolution. Kathy, roll call, please.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Malpakum?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. Resolution 2022-40, hopefully I got this resolution number right. I don't know.
I don't know.
National Teacher Appreciation Week. Director Bankus, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for action item FI?
Thank you. I would love to. Resolution 2022-40, National Teacher Appreciation Week, May 2 through 6, 2022. Whereas America's greatest strength has always been an education, an educated citizenry. And that it, the quality of citizenry, I'm having a hard time with this, is directly attributable to our system of free and universal public education. Whereas the foundation upon which that system of public schooling rests is the teacher who is challenged daily to reach out to every student to provide the assistance and guidance necessary for full intellectual development. Whereas the work of the teacher immeasurably affects the lives of all students. Whereas Colorado Springs School District 11 has over 1,800 certified teachers who include our classroom instructional leaders, student special service providers, counselors, behavior specialists, and library technology educators. Our dedicated teachers support and care for the educational, social, emotional, and health needs for all of our diverse students. And whereas teachers are also necessary and valued coaches, including teaching, teacher learning and literacy coaches to provide professional support for our other teachers. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the teachers of School District 11 be given the deepest respect and admiration of the citizens of this community, and I might add, this school board. And that May 2 through 6, 2022, be recognized as National Teacher Appreciation Week. And witness whereof, and we have hereunto set our hands and caused the official seal of said school district to hereunto affix this 27th day of April, 2022. I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution 2022-40, recognizing May 2 through 6, 2022, as National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Moved and seconded. Board member comments? Director Ott.
So we did send out cookies to our staff and not just teachers. And it's a minute, very small token of appreciation. You know, consumed in one day, consumed in less than five minutes. But know that you are appreciated by students, families, board members, and certainly staff around the district and the community year-round. And that it's not just a cookie that we'd like to offer. Thanks.
Director Daniels.
Thank you. I personally would like to say thank you to all of the educators in District 11. I, my admiration for who you are and what you've provided for our students, not only in the last three years, but I would have to say, for as long as I can remember. Of course, you touch every last one of us. Everybody has to go to school. And everyone has an experience with being in a school somewhere in America. And it's because of your dedication, children, you're the first experience to what it looks like to be in society and grow and learn and discover and figure things out. And as you can see, it remains with us for the rest of our life with that one entry point. And you stick with it and you grow from it even when you're not deeply appreciated for years. And I am grateful that you're still with us. It's been hard. I have cried for you. I have cried with you. And I am, I'm in awe of the work that it takes to do this job. And this has been like a 40-year journey because we know it wasn't just the pandemic. This has been an industry that has been hit hard for years. So thank you, and I'm grateful you have people to fight for you, to be here. Even when people fight at you, come after you, you're still here. I look forward to the day when we go to the right place to fight for you. Not just this, this space, but there are other spaces that need to know you matter and we need to make sure you get what you need. Thank you.
Director Jorgensen.
Yes, thank you. It was D11 teachers that inspired me to become a teacher. It was Ms. Connie Law and Ms. Jackson from Saban Middle School. I think Connie's still at Doherty right now. And it was Mr. Giliani at Doherty that inspired me to pursue science and teaching. So, and I know that's still happening, that your teachers that are in the classroom and in the trenches doing the work today and through the pandemic and now beyond it that are holding the line and showing your true self, your good days and your bad days and being there for your kids and being a real human all in it together. And so that is inspiring to, to kids like me who once was there and saying, what do I want to do? And I see the, you know, teachers that inspire and that's what, that's what I wanted to do. So you guys are still doing that for a lot of our kids. So not only are our teachers, you know, doing the daily work, but they're inspiring minds every day on a whole other level. So it's only one week on this agenda here, but on the resolution, but it is something that should be done every day and we appreciate you from the board. So thank you.
Yeah, and again, my comments. As you can see, it's a universal sentiment out here from the board that our teaching staff, I want our teaching staff to understand that you are valued, respected, and deeply appreciated. When you look at the board priorities and the banner behind me, staff investment is specifically called out. And it comes with the board commitment for creating a culture to attract, develop, and retain exceptional individuals. All those board priorities behind me are non-negotiables, including staff investment. Okay, we've already, through the course of this year, tried to provide wellness bonus, hazard pay, hiring and retention bonus, increase the substitute pay from $120 a day to $180 a day. All to provide our teachers some amount of relief at the classroom level, but it does not stop there. We want to ensure through negotiations to provide a robust compensation package for next year and also take care of the mental and emotional needs of our staff and ensuring you receive high-quality professional development too. We have new curriculum coming in, so we want to ensure next year with the new curriculum and the new assessment system, our teachers are provided the support so that you can navigate those new, new things that you are exposed to. So teachers, like what Director Loma was sharing a little bit about his growing up, his history. I grew up in India and I am here because of teachers that got me here. And I did not even go to a school which had a roof over it. And I did not even go to a school which had a roof over it. It was more like a attached roof. So when the monsoon rains came, we would huddle up in a corner of the, corner of the classroom. But we always, I can always look up to my teacher to provide that high-quality instruction. So I am here and looking back, forty years back, I would have never imagined I would be in this capacity in a foreign country half the way around the world. And that's because of teachers. So I have a deep appreciation for our teachers back in India, back out here. So thank you. Roll call please, Marcella.
Dr. Bankus?
Aye.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Mel Packham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the board enthusiastically adopts this resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, Mental Health Awareness Month. Director Daniels, can you please read the resolution and make the motion?
Yes, thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, National Mental Health Awareness Month, May two thousand twenty-two. Whereas families have been deeply affected by the pandemic and children are likely facing increased stress due to, due to the changes, fear and uncertainty caused by illness, isolation, impending homelessness, and job and healthcare loss at rates never before seen. And whereas children have been found to be at a higher risk of abuse or witnessing domestic abuse at this time of long-term school closures. And whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention reports that more than twenty percent of the youth have a diagnosed mental health disorder in the United States. And whereas the average age of early signs of mental illness is fourteen, when most students are entering high school. And whereas an estimated sixty percent of students with emotional, behavioral, and mental health disorders do not graduate from high school, according to the U.S. Department of Education. And whereas National Survey of Drug Use and Health Data shows mental health diagnosis, suicide rates, non-suicidal self-injury, such as cutting and emergency room visits for students experiencing mental health issues are all on the rise. And whereas suicide is the third leading cause of death in the United States and the leading cause of death for youth ages five through nineteen in Colorado. And ninety percent of people who die by suicide have an underlying mental illness. Whereas one thousand five hundred and fifty-five suicide assessments were administered to District eleven students from August two thousand eighteen to May two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the University of Maryland Center for School Mental Health, CSMH, has found that educating staff, students, and parents and the signs and symptoms of mental illness is key to both early intervention and dismantling the stigma surrounding health. And whereas the CSMH reports that students are more likely to follow through with mental health services in school settings and bringing mental health services onto campus enables easier communication among providers, parents, and teachers. And whereas schools that implement comprehensive mental health systems see improved academic performance, fewer special education placements, decreased disciplinary actions, and higher graduation rates. And whereas spreading awareness of the importance of mental health can help people realize that many ways in which mental health, mental illness impacts them and those around them and can provide the opportunity to learn about available services. Now therefore be it resolved that Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education hereby proclaims the month of May as National Mental Health Awareness Month in Colorado Springs School District eleven to shine a light on mental health in hopes to reduce community-wide stigma, provide support, educate the public, and advocate for equal health and well-being. I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-two dash forty-one in support of Mental Health Awareness Month.
Moved and seconded? Just, just for the public record, I want to add that Director Bankus had a family emergency and she had to leave. Any comments? Director Jorgensen?
Yeah, one of the seven schools I was at this morning, I think it was Russell, had a sign right on their front door that said, "You are not a failure, you are not broken" for, for having mental health counseling or for having counseling. And like the resolution say that Director Daniels read, removing the stigma. You know, it's a, yeah, I had notes here, I'm sorry. Normalizing services and counseling and, and make sure that people know it's okay. And it's, it's for our benefit that we get counseling when we don't know what's going on in our, in our heads or hearts or minds. And that, that we're able to process those things with people who are qualified to help us. And that that should be normalized so that doesn't go too far in, in harming ourselves or, or others. So I appreciate the resolution and what it means for, for D eleven.
Thank you. Director Daniels?
Thank you. I am old enough to remember when mental health was a taboo. We would not talk about signs. Anything we noticed, it, it had to be hushed and we had to make sure that other people didn't know that it happened. And we were a community of just quietly suffering. And the trauma over the years. It's, it's really amazing to watch a child who has an opportunity to express how they feel and not be penalized for it. And to have adults who are developing in such a way that they would have language to help them and not make them wrong or even stick them into special education. I come from a community where we had it all because we had nowhere to go. And we had to figure it out. So it's really exciting to know that we don't have to live in isolation simply because it's not appropriate to discuss. And there are a lot of students who need to know that they have someone they can talk to. So I'm grateful that we are finally moving towards that as a community. Thank you.
Director Ott?
Thank you. I, I, great points by Vice President Jorgensen and Director Daniels about reducing and eliminating ideally the stigma and having people and especially our students find the support that they need because suicide is a serious issue in this community. And knowing about that and the concerns that our students have is a significant part of addressing that situation. And I just want to say thank you, of course, to our staff who deals with that as well because we have a team that does that and supports our students and their well-being. Thanks.
Thank you. So I mean, the challenge is real. COVID has only worsened the issues. With all the isolation, our students and adults, adults too, are coping daily with mental and emotional trauma. Like what Director Ott said, even considering suicide ideations at a young age. So we have to address the mental, emotional, and behavioral, behavioral disorders first, ensuring our students feel safe. And then the learning can happen in the classrooms. So one other thing that I wanted to point out and thank our community due to the generosity of our taxpayers in approving the two thousand seventeen MLO. We will, as of next year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we will have counselors in every single school, including all elementary school. That will go a long way in providing some of our supports to students. Kathy, roll call please.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Mel Packham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the adoption, the motion is adopted. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven? Are we jumping again? It's like from forty-one, I have forty-seven now. So. Okay. Financial Literacy Month. Director Jorgensen, can you please read the resolution and make the motion for action item F seven?
I believe it's forty-seven because we snuck this one in last week after some were already pre-made and built. So I think that was the, the understanding of that. But it would be my pleasure. Whereas the, sorry, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, recognizing April of two thousand twenty-two as Financial Literacy Month. Whereas the Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education is committed to ensuring that the schools of Colorado Springs School District eleven are empowering the whole child. And whereas the board believes that an important indicator of college and career readiness is financial literacy education that exposes students to the basics of financial planning, including the value of money and how to budget, invest, spend, and borrow. And whereas according to the recent report entitled Economic Well-Being of U.S. Households by the Board of Governors of the Federal Reserve System, nearly four in ten adults in the United States cannot cover an unexpected expense of just four hundred dollars. And whereas according to the two thousand and twenty report entitled Survey of the States Economic and Personal Finance Education in Our Nation Schools by the Council for Economic Education, only twenty-five states require students to take an economics course as a high school graduation requirement. And only twenty-one states require students to take a personal finance course as a high school graduation requirement, either independently or as part of an economics course. And whereas expanding access to educating all students on the foundations of sound money management and personal literacy around the global financial system will provide individuals with a greater sense of knowledge and comfort for managing finances and building wealth. And whereas quality personal financial education is essential to ensure that individuals are prepared to manage money, credit, and debt, and to become responsible workers, heads of households, investors, entrepreneurs, business leaders, and citizens, and empowers individuals to make wise financial decisions and reduces the confusion caused by an increasing complex economy. And whereas a greater understanding of and familiarity with financial markets and institutions will lead to increased economic activity and growth. Now therefore be it resolved that the Colorado Springs School District eleven Board of Education designates April two thousand twenty-two as Financial Literacy Month to raise public awareness about the importance of personal finance education in the United States and the serious consequences that may result from a lack of understanding about personal, personal finances and our ever-changing economy. I move that the Board of Education adopt Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, Financial Literacy Month in District eleven.
Moved and seconded? Comments?
Since my mic is still on, I'll, I'll comment. This is a, a great piece here that I think we've, we've seen a lot of memes out there. If you're, you know, out on any different platforms of, you know, they taught me how to do, you know, the area of this irregular triangle, but I don't know how to do taxes. Or they taught me how to, you know, do calculus, but I don't know how to manage my, my personal finances. So you know, we see those and we go, yeah, that's true. And, and then we don't do anything about it. So this is a start for us as, as a board to have this resolution to recognize Financial Literacy Month. And then hopefully it should be a springboard into further discussions on the good things that we already have going in D eleven. We do have financial classes available in different sectors and, and schools of our, of our community here in D eleven, but it's not a requirement as of yet. And so I think that might be something that I would like us to explore in the future as a board.
Thank you. Director Daniels?
Thank you. I appreciate this resolution, Director Jorgensen. It is a question that often pops up with lots of, I would say, adults after high school. This is one of those things that I often think about because when we talk about reimagining school, this is part of those things because we've been designed to be on the college path. That comes from years of believing what we were told, this is what we need to do versus where we are today and knowing things need to shift. So it's not just about like assessments and reading and math and all of those things as much as it is we need to come together and figure out how to do it for today. And we've known that for years that the system had to shift. So maybe this will be a beginning for that conversation, perhaps, maybe, perhaps. If we can come together, perhaps, maybe. We shall see. But thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gladich?
Yes, I, I normally don't share with resolutions, but I was at Rudy Elementary School this morning, walked into a third grade classroom and happened to walk into a teacher talking to the class about how they were going to be able to earn bucks between now and the end of the year. And walked in and she said, well, doing a little bit of financial literacy, is that okay? I said, sure. And they were basically teaching the kids how they can earn money and there were like five or six things that they could do. But what they had to do was learn how to bank it, budget it, save it, and spend it on whatever it was that they wanted to spend it on. And sort of glanced at the screen and could see that they could get money if they got a compliment. So I gave them a compliment that was threefold. And so the teacher said to the class, well, you just earned a hundred bucks. The superintendent gave you a compliment. And a student raised his hand and he said, he gave us three and one. It's three hundred bucks. I was impressed. So I, I just had to share that.
Great story. Thank you for sharing that with us. Any other comments? So just like what Director Daniels talked about, Director Jorgensen, I appreciate you bringing this forward, crafting that language. It is vital for our students to understand the value of money, save and invest, living within their means, especially in this day and age. So you talked about some of the good things that are happening in our district. Maybe some of these financial literacy programs are happening. And I want to share about my conversation yesterday with Wayne Hutchinson, who was the president of D eleven Foundation. So I ran into him at Taylor Elementary School and he pulled me aside as I was leaving the school. And he said like, I want to share something with you. And he shared with me about a teacher at Jenkins Middle School. And my daughter goes to Jenkins Middle School. And I didn't hear about this from my daughter, but I heard from Ms., Mr. Hutchinson. And he talked about Mrs. Brittany Hardy at Jenkins Middle School has started an FBLA chapter, Future Business Leaders of America. They have forty-four student members out there. And twenty-five of those members competed at state in March. Jenkins was the only D eleven middle school to compete at the state FBLA competition. Of those twenty-five students, eleven students made the national team. Now, those students are now going to go to Chicago to compete in the national championships in July. And Mr. Hutchinson was also sharing that Duane Roberson, our CTE director, is going to be able to support some of the expenses associated with this trip from his departmental funds. So thanks, Duane. And Wayne also shared with me that Mrs. Hardy is looking for some additional financial support to take the students to some museums and educational experiences in Chicago. So he asked me to share this information with the community. So what a perfect way. This resolution opened the door. So congratulations to Mrs. Hardy and those students out there. And I see Tom Kopley out there, who's the assistant principal. So carry that message to Jenkins Middle School and those students and Mrs. Hardy. Kathy? Oh. Director Daniels?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Dr. Gladich, thank you for bringing that up because there are a lot of schools who offer the reward bucks that they could have. And they have stores where they can purchase those items. And the teachers and parents apply all of those goodies for those students. And they totally know how to make sure they're counting it and they are aware of it. So you're absolutely right. Good observation. I forgot that many of the schools are already doing that. In elementary, by the way. Yes, thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Kathy, roll call please.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Mel Packham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it and the motion is adopted. Moving on, non-action items. Regulations AER one District Accountability Committee and AER two School Accountability Committees. Dr. Gladich, this is new information?
Yes, sir. This is a non-action item and hopefully it will come back to the next boarding meeting as an action item. Catherine Ritchie-Reffis here this evening. Just pay a, a close attention to AER one. Is recommended for revisions that will include changes to the membership of the committee. And there's also a new paragraph on page four that will allow meetings via teleconferencing or other electronic means. But lastly, in, in this particular one, you're also here that the DAC chair is revised to allow for maximum service of no more than four years to align with board member tenure. And then AER two is recommended with only one revision and that would be to allow for meetings to take place via teleconferencing or other electronic means. So Catherine, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Gladich. Good evening, members of the board. And you just took the words out of my mouth, Dr. Gladich. I really don't have much more to say other than regulations AER one and AER two are kind of an anomaly. These two are the only two regulations that require a board vote per Colorado revised statutes, twenty-two, eleven, three, oh, one, for example. So these are So these are up in front of the board tonight for your vote to authorize these revisions. And I just want to say thank you to Lyman Kaiser, who is on the DAC committee, who brought these revisions forward to the policy committee.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about these regulations? Director Rock?
Thank you. I'm just curious, we just, in the last couple of years, expanded the I want to say the, maybe it's the service, yes, it is, the service of the chair from two years to three years. And we haven't exactly had time to see how that worked out for anybody. And now we're suddenly going to four, which is aligning with the board member term, which really has nothing whatsoever to do with the DAC term. So I'm curious if you can explain that to me. Thanks.
The thought was that the term of the chair of the DAC could align to the term of a board member just so that they could have a good working relationship for the same amount of years. So.
And yet, there's no guarantee that more than one or two years would necessarily overlap. It just, it seems.
That is true. There is no guarantee. And remember too, that the, it's a yearly, it's an annual vote. So even though they could serve a maximum of four years, it might just be a total, it might be one.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you going to come back next year with five years for the DAC chair?
No, we will not.
Any further questions from the board? I had one question. When I looked at the revisions, are we saying parent DAC members have to now serve on their local school SACS? Is that the?
No. That added language regarding DAC members representing various school levels groups, no. That's not a requirement that they serve on that SAC.
Thank you. I thought the language read that way, that they are required to serve on the school SACS. That DAC parent members. Maybe I'm mistaken.
Okay.
Okay. So, and I just want to also thank Ms. Velvet Stepanek. And she's served in this role for now four years. So that's a lot of time commitment. So I appreciate her willingness to serve in that capacity. Any further questions on this? Thumbs up to move this to consent. Okay?
Thank you very much.
We can move this to consent, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, recommendations for elementary pathway sites. Again, this is new information. Dr. Gledich?
Yes, sir, it is. Let me just finish my note. Okay. Board members, during the 2021 school year, D11 elementary schools had an opportunity to submit an application to become a pathway school. And I want to look at very closely and read them. Science, technology, engineering, and math, arts integration, outdoor and environmental education, OEE. These pathways were identified through previous community engagement opportunities. Well, the district went through the entire process and Sherry is here tonight to share with you the schools that have been selected to be the pathways for next year. This is exciting. This is a part of our academic master plan, which is something that's really providing unique, great opportunities for our kids. But one of the things I wanted to share upfront is that selecting a school to become a pathway school is like selecting that one candidate to be the teacher in the third grade classroom. When you get tons of great candidates and you need to make that one decision. So unfortunately, fortunately, I'm not quite sure, it depends upon which side of the table you're sitting on, only one could be selected. But one of the things that I really felt really good about, and I tried to give you a read ahead because I recognized it this morning talking to Dr. Comfort and Sherry callback, said schools that were not selected are still going to receive opportunities if they would like to. They can opt in and receive additional support and resources to continue their programs. And so I really appreciated hearing that. And I also heard that, I believe it was Steel Elementary School maybe, has already taken us up on doing that. So Sherry's going to share with you tonight the schools that we've selected to bring forward to the board to be our initial pathway schools. But I wanted you to know that the schools that did not get selected still have those opportunities to continue and grow in the area that they are choosing to. And we will continue to provide that resource through Sherry callbacks division. And so I wanted you to be aware that that does exist out there. But it is an exciting night and I see a few principals in the audience tonight that are of the schools that have been selected. And so it seems to me that they've brought staff and parents and other members of their school community here this evening to hear the conversation about being an academic pathway school. So with that said, Sherry and Dr. Comfort, I'll leave it up to the two of you and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gledich, and thank you, Board of Directors, for giving us this opportunity to talk with you about the process we've been engaged in for quite some time now. Of course, we have two goals that are supported by the Academic Master Plan. We want to increase student achievement and we want to increase student enrollment. One of the major components of the Academic Master Plan is the development of K-12 pathways that focus on specific programming options that our community has told us that they desire. Our current work this year has focused on three of those pathways, as Dr. Gledich mentioned, STEM, arts integration, and outdoor and environmental education. Once those programming options were defined, a team of leaders began to research those options in order to find successful models of implementation, schools with demonstrated positive results over time. And those leaders then took what they learned in that research and wrote white papers for each of those programming options. Through the implementation of our dual-language immersion at Rogers, we followed a different model and that program was placed at a school. We learned quite a bit through that and we used those learnings to develop the application model that was used this year. Every D11 elementary school was given the option to send a school leader and teacher or teachers on trips last fall to see exemplar pathway schools firsthand. 16 schools participated in at least one trip. Some schools participated in multiple trips. On those trips, we had the opportunity not only to see classrooms, but also to ask questions and discuss our observations with school staff members and leaders, and sometimes students. Upon returning from those trips, our school staff members shared what they learned with their full staff and with their parent and community groups. Schools then made the decisions about whether or not they would apply for one or more of these pathway opportunities. Applications included a written component as well as letters of support from parents and families and from community members. Additionally, each school that chose to apply engaged with us in an in-person interview process. And that interview included families, community partners, staff members, and our favorite moments were with students. Our AMP leadership team carefully reviewed each of these applications and then made recommendations to our executive cabinet group. Executive Cabinet then did the same, and those are the recommendations that we're bringing to you tonight. The review process identified both benefits and risks within each school's applications. I want to echo what Dr. Gledich said, that these were challenging decisions. Every application that we received was high quality. I think that bears repeating. Every single application was high quality and that made our decisions quite challenging. Of course, this is a good problem to have. This is the problem we want to have. Throughout the process at both the school and district levels, we considered questions like, what results do we want? What resources do we have available? What barriers exist and how can we solve for those or find a way around them? What choices do we have? How well does this application meet the results that we want to see in implementation? My favorite Dr. Gledich question, if we make a particular choice, what could go wrong? Which choice provides the best balance of benefit and risk? And then the other piece that was already mentioned this evening, how can we support schools who might not be chosen on a smaller scale? And so as we move into planning efforts in partnership with our pathway sites, we'll be working to identify the supports that are needed. Those could include professional development, materials, curriculum, facility improvements, and others. We want to ensure that the two STEM schools and the two arts integration schools function as smaller networks, creating consistency across these pathways. We want to ensure that our marketing efforts help all parents to understand the choices that are available to them in District 11. And we are working with two marketing vendors to make sure we do that well. And as a reminder, the pathways will officially launch in the 2324 school year. A planning year ensures that we can launch these programs in a high-quality manner. I am proud to present our recommendations for our pathway schools to you tonight. And you do see many school leaders, staff, families, and students in our audience tonight. We are recommending as STEM sites on the west side Bristol Elementary School and on the east side McCullough Elementary School. For arts integration schools, on the west side, we are recommending Columbia Elementary School and on the east side Martinez Elementary School. Outdoor and environmental education is a little bit trickier because a school does not always, or really does not have control over the surrounding landscape outside its school. But we're proud to share that we are recommending Halbert Elementary, which has Garden of the Gods in its backyard, thankfully, as our outdoor and environmental education site to start. Hopefully, we'll be able to add a second site in years to come. We do know that all schools who applied put forth significant time and effort in creating their applications. That was evident. And they also did the same for preparing for the interview process. Knowing that this was a competitive process and that we may have schools who were not chosen pathway recommendations, we wanted to be sure that we created an option for support for schools who were not chosen. To that end, we created a research and design option that schools can choose to engage in with us. In that R and D option, schools will identify a smaller slice of their application that they feel especially passionate about. And our district teams will partner with them to provide resources to further develop, to further the development of that school-selected project or implementation. As you heard Dr. Gledich mention, Steel Elementary has already begun this process and we anticipate that other schools will likely choose to participate as well. I know that Dr. Comfort is meeting with Taylor in May about an R and D option. And earlier you heard a bit about Keller already engaging with us in the R and D process to support their STEAM programming. Schools also have the option of engaging in a process to develop an innovation plan, if they so choose, with district resources to support. So again, those schools that may not have been chosen, we do want to honor them and the work that they put into their applications through these additional options that are available to them for support. And again, I cannot thank the schools who applied enough because of the level of quality of every application that we received. Made our decisions very challenging. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
So thank you. Thank you, Ms. Callback, and I will echo some of your comments. Thanks to all the schools for putting in the work, collaborating with your teachers and also with your community and coming up with this quality applications. So you made Ms. Callback's job a little bit harder in picking the schools. So I visited some of your schools. I see the passion in you. So, but, but thank you for being here. Some of our students are probably well past their bedtime. So, but it's good to see you guys here too. Looking at my board. Director Jorgensen?
So reading through these, part of your questions is based on your proposed vision, what facilities will you need to create the ideal 21st century learning environment or what other, you know, staffing or support do you need? In some of these, we've got, you know, hey, we need to have, you know, flexible seating-style classrooms. We need to remake a space or we need one FTE. I'm assuming, just for clarity, with the application and with this approval, we are moving down that path of saying, you get it, you got it, we'll get it for you. Is that the case?
I would say in part, yes. Non-recurring pieces like furniture, like facilities, improvements, professional development, materials, absolutely will be partnering with schools. To be fair, we've had some very honest conversations from the start of the application process with every school who chose to engage around the issue of FTE. And what we have shared is that especially during the planning year, additional FTE are likely not on the table. However, as a school grows a program and its enrollment, the FTE will absolutely follow.
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense. I had some other individual questions, but.
Go ahead. You can finish it.
So for Bristol, I know that you guys had an excellent strings program. Is that still staying in place?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good to know.
And I'm hoping Gabe is telling you the same thing behind me.
Yeah, he's heading on. So, okay, good deal. And then out of all the applications, Halbert, your, your theme on your presentation, very enjoyable as I was reading through that, the very outdoor theme. You got an A+ on presentation, so.
And the shirt to match.
And the shirt to match. So thank you. That was my main concern. And so thank you. All right.
Thank you. Director Daniels?
Thank you. I was just curious about the, the the proposal and how the rubrics went for choosing and selecting these specific schools. And I guess the second question is, I think we were also looking at how they will feed into certain middle schools as well, right?
Yes.
And is it possible to just kind of, I guess, give the community a refresher of what this is all culminating to and how they're maybe some recall of where this started and why we're here. Does that make sense?
It does.
Thank you.
And I'd like to start with your question about rubrics. There were rubrics developed by our, our internal teams as part of the review process of applications. I know that many times when we think about a rubric, we think about a number score at the end of that rubric and then we just rank order everybody. We quickly became aware that these decisions were a little more multifaceted or complex than a number score might help us to identify. There are pieces that are absolutely within a school's control. There are also pieces and factors that are not within a school's control. Location, the size of their building, the capacity that they can grow a program into in their building. And so rather than use a rubric as a number score, we used rubrics instead to identify the benefits of a, that were contained within a school's application or interview, as well as the risks that might be contained in that school's interview or application. Does that answer that? Okay. In terms of feeder patterns, you are correct. We've started with elementary. Our next step is conversations with middle schools about pathways that they would now like to pursue. Many of our elementary applications included outreach to their feeder middle schools and in some cases even their feeder high schools. And so in some of those application packets, you'll even see letters of support from the schools that they feed into on a K-12 tree, if you will, stating that those principals at the higher levels are well aware and want to support that programming as students start to matriculate up in levels. We've had multiple conversations with our middle school principals at this point, fewer with our high school, but we will, we'll get to that as well. So that we create logical feeder patterns with these pathways. Students have lots of opportunity to explore at the elementary level. It will likely become more specialized as we move into middle school and most definitely into high school. Thank you.
Director Loma?
I have to say, I'm enjoying this meeting because the programs that are coming, you can see they're all geared to, for enrollment, to increase enrollment, of course, quality education. So everything I've seen today has been focused on that. And that's like refreshing to me because, you know, we have to, I kept saying, you know, this is all hands on deck. Let's do something. And I'm just really pleased that I can see you guys are really doing stuff. And it's, it's just a pleasure to watch it happen. I can't wait to see the result. Thank you.
Thank you. We're excited too.
Thank you. Any other comments or question? Director Daniel?
Yeah, I just had one quick question. If you could share, a lot has happened since this conversation was started. And so it gets a little murky about where it all came from, but I gets a little murky about where it all came from, but I would love it if you just shared that this was on the docket and somehow, some way, things started happening, and now we're getting back to where we originally kind of left things off, right?
That is correct. This all started with the Western Demographics Report that was commissioned by the district several years ago. I want to say probably four or five years ago at this point. That Western Demographics Report helped us to realize that in our community with declining enrollment, one of the options that parents are seeking is, I believe the term that they used was niche programming. It wasn't so much about the school in my neighborhood, it was about parents seeking specific programming options. And so my predecessor, Mr. Ingstrom, then took that information and held a series of community engagement meetings in the 2019-2020 school year, right up until the pandemic, where he engaged parents further and did surveys and lots of feedback opportunities around, these are our programming options that we could offer? Which ones, parents and families, are you particularly interested in? And that's how we came to dual-language immersion, STEM, arts integration, outdoor and environmental education.
Was collected for what was the preference from the community? Had tons of world cafes, all of that stuff happening, so we could get to this point. And I appreciate you keeping the flame alive and allowing us to get here so we can get to that work. So I appreciate each and every one of you that submitted an application. I know you're working hard, it's good to see. I'm excited about that, and it's so exciting that we are looking at what many of the community members requested years ago. Thank you.
That's correct, and I appreciate you recognizing all of the folks in this room. I did not do any of this work myself. This was absolutely a team effort with lots of people involved.
Knew that this was a part of what we were up to, and you didn't lose sight of it. So thank you, because now we get to share that, what the work has been, what you've been doing, what you've been applying for, and the rest of the work we have to do. So thank you, thank you, thank you for not letting that fall in the midst of everything that was going on. It's really good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions or concerns? So thank you again for all the work that you guys did. So in the interest of transparency, can that rubric that you used to evaluate, can that be shared with all the other schools too? The schools that got selected and also the schools that did not, so then they have an understanding as to maybe these are some of the areas of growth for them?
We will be sharing the identified benefits and risks with every school who applied.
Great. And just for clarity and for our community to understand this, these pathway schools do not have specific, or do they have specific boundaries?
They do. These are not magnets. That was a concept that the community did not support. I think we saw some of that about a year ago, and so they'll maintain their neighborhood boundaries and will accept students on choice permits who are very interested in these programs as well.
Okay, great. This is one part of the AMP. The other part is quality neighborhood schools.
Yes.
Where are we with that? Are we getting close to figuring out what we, the definition for a quality neighborhood school, and then going back to the community and saying, this is what you can expect in our quality neighborhood schools and have that accountability in place? Where are we with that process of defining quality neighborhood schools?
Sure. We do still anticipate having a draft for the board to review by the final board meeting in June.
On that language for the quality neighborhood school?
Yes.
Okay. So the other thing, I know that principals are here too, and I'm assuming that they don't have anything new to share with us at this point in time, they're here just.
Showing their support.
Showing their support, great. Okay, so, yeah, well, Vice President Jurgensen asked all the principals and school staff to stand up so you can be recognized. So thank you for all the hard work, and I do have a message to the principals and the school staff. A program is going to succeed or fail by the buy-in that you have in that school community that you have, and you guys are the building leaders out there, so you need to, the responsibility that you get with this is that you build a capacity in your school to ensure that all your staff are 100% committed to adopting this as an everyday implementation in the classrooms, that all the curriculum are being taught with an art focus or with the STEM focus or the outdoor education focus. And Ms. Colback talked about the FTE allocations. I looked at your reports, and a lot of you had several FTE requests to support this program, and like what Ms. Colback said, that because of budget constraints, we may be able to selectively support you that first year. I'm not talking about this year, I'm talking about 23-24, when it gets, because I do see a need for you to implement this program with fidelity. You've got to have some type of coordinator who is running this program, but it's not going to be three or four FTEs. I wish we can support that, but that comes with increasing student enrollment in your schools, and then the board is going to be fully vested in providing the supports that you need. So strong staff buy-in, I wanted to emphasize that, the need for the staff to 100% commit to this. The other thing, I've got a couple of requests, if possible. So this next year is going to be a transition here where they are getting ready for the program in 23-24. Maybe sometime in the fall, these five schools can come and provide an update to the board, and the reason I say is at that time, we would potentially have a new superintendent in place, so I'm sure he or she would like to listen, and we can put that as a work session agenda, as to where you are in getting this program off the ground and what have you done over the summer and the first couple of months or three months going into next year, so.
Could I share something?
Absolutely.
You know, I'm working on the board's monitoring report for the priorities, and I have included new metrics that you didn't have originally, and there will be a metric on the academic master plan. So a report in the fall will fit nicely because I'm going to have quarterly reports for first quarter, second quarter, third quarter, and fourth quarter for all of your priorities. Not all will be measured each quarter, but, you know, maybe once a year, twice a year, or three times a year, so that's already included in the works and the plan.
Thank you, Dr. Gledich, you are reading my thoughts. That's what Dr. Bankes usually says, that before she can speak, you are speaking for her. So one other comment I do want to make, and this is specifically addressed to the Taylor community out there, the Taylor staff, and I do want to take a couple of minutes to talk to the Taylor staff and share my thoughts. First, thank you for the invite to visit to the school last night for the arts night. That was very well put together, and I'm sharing some of the pictures on the screen. And actually, these came from Director Nelson, who sent these pictures to me. So great community participation. I saw parent engagement at that school, and I got to interact with several teachers, including the art teacher, Ms. Emily Warner. Hopefully, I got your name right. And every staff that I interacted with, what struck me was the passion and commitment. That staff was fully committed from what I could see, and the students too, and the community. So the work that went into getting these, getting all these artwork ready, and these are some amazing artwork. Director Art talked about, go to that school and visit that school and see that amazing artwork created by second graders and third graders and fifth graders and kindergartners too, so it's amazing displays out there. And a lot of that artwork that's on there were created with recycled materials, so found a creative way to use a cardboard or paper, plastic. So I was just really impressed, and Ms. Colback, you mentioned that the schools that did not receive or did not get chosen for this application can get a small slice of the, slice, that was the word, maybe I would strongly urge, maybe they get a larger slice, rather than a smaller slice, especially if it's going to be professional development that is going to really benefit those teachers and the staff. And so I really appreciate, and to the Taylor staff, what I saw out there and talking to you, you shared some of your, after they put in all the work and commitment out there, you can sense their disappointment that they were not selected for this program, but what I saw out there is that if any staff is going to continue with this program, it is that Taylor and Taylor staff, because I see passion and commitment with them. So, thank you. That's all I had for comments, so this will go back. Dr. Gledich, do you have any additional comments?
Sure, sure. I think Director Art has a comment, and Director Daniels, and then I'll share.
Director Art.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to check, since we did have so many principals show up, and I don't, I wondered if any of them had expected to speak to us about their programs or had anything that they wanted to share.
Which is kind of what I initially talked about, since the principals were here, are they here to talk? And Ms. Colback mentioned that they were here just for support, so.
Okay.
Sure, come on over. Come on over.
You'll need to come to the podium.
Yeah, you've got to come over so the community at home can also listen to you. Introduce yourself, sir.
I'm Gabe Hamel, principal at Bristol. You talked about commitment to staff, you know, our staff, we have 100% commitment from staff, and it was for STEAM or arts, so I think that's, I just want to share that that our staff is 100% committed.
Great. So I will ask that two years from now, so that's that accountability piece that comes with it.
Yeah, we'll do it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Any other principals before I, that want to comment? Okay, there you come. Introduce yourself again.
Yes, Toby LaFiere, principal at Halbert Elementary. Hello, board, Dr. Gledich. Commitment, we've already been committed because we've already been moving down the pathway of outdoor learning already, and when I went to them formally and asked families, students, and the staff, 100% commitment. And I want to end with, not all classrooms have four walls, so that's kind of our motto or kind of what we're.
Or a roof.
Or a roof, exactly, yeah. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, I feel pressure, so I had to come up and speak.
Introduce yourself.
Yes, so I'm Anna Stewart, I'm the principal over at Martinez. So we are just super excited. You talked about the staffing, you know, buy-in, and we also had 100% of our staff on. We have actually several of our staff members that went through a master's in arts program, so they are just thrilled. This is going to be our vehicle to be able to relaunch and reimagine Martinez. So we're super excited, we still have STEM, we had to pull back from a little bit, but we're still going to have that in there with all of our arts integration, and we're going to put the art in Martinez.
Oh, yeah, that's great. And invite us when that happens, maybe next year, like we can have a community arts event like what Taylor did. Yep.
Hello, Chris Brandt, principal at Columbia. We were very rejuvenated, energized by the process, being here, hearing all the support from you guys, and just all the individual excitement is encouraging to me and knowing that we're going to have support with all of this moving forward, so I thank all of you for just the positive comments and support and encouragement as we go on this venture, but we're all very excited at Columbia to be doing it too, so thank you.
Thank you. Are we missing one principal? Okay, he's coming over. Now the pressure is on, you can't be.
Yeah. You can't be the one that doesn't go. I'm Brett Wilson, the principal over at McCullough, so for the East Side STEM Pathway School. And to echo what my colleagues have said, we're very excited what, at McCullough, we've been able to build over the last three years around some of our STEM programming and the partnerships in the community and working with Victoria Henderson and Peterson Space Force Base and some of those elements. We're just really excited to take that from an element of the school to the full culture of the school, and so we're excited for that piece and your support behind it, so thank you.
So thank you. Any further, oh, I did see Director Daniels.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge, Ms. Colback, this is also tied into the CTEs that are happening at the high school levels and Mr. Dewayne Robison's work with making sure that we are fluid in how the elementary is moving to those pathways in high school to further the interest with, I mean, because I'm thinking about the outdoor program he had at the Open House for Odyssey, where students could get credit for learning those survival skills. And I know there were tons of people in the community years ago saying, why don't we have something like that? So I just want to make sure that we're letting the community know, we hear you, we've been hearing you, and we're, you know, I'm just grateful for everyone here that has been in the work and ready to come bring it full force, you know, like, so everyone can see, we haven't been resting on our laurels, right? We've been hard at work, and everyone has been in, and you've got the buy-in, and even, Nicole, I see you out there, I know you've been at this for a long time, and I so appreciate that, and I just, I just want the community to know, you guys have been, your hands have been in it, okay? Your hearts and minds have been in it, and it's a full vision, not piecemealing it, I know, borgi, bungy, curriculum, math.
Paul.
Paul, yes. You know, we talked about this.
I have to say Paul because I don't pronounce it correctly either.
Right? But I'm just saying, like, it is exciting to see that we are moving towards that and we are focusing, and it's been there for a while, and we are now ready to just start, you know, laying it out. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I just, so I am seeing it correctly, right?
Yes.
I just want to make sure.
There are great connection and bridge opportunities from this work at elementary all the way to our CTE programs at middle school and high school that we are excited and look forward to developing even further.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. And the students just left, so hopefully they can get home in time for bed. Dr. Gledich.
Yes, sir. I just want to share an observation, an observation. I think you sensed or felt excitement from the principals that spoke to you tonight. You see that there's people from the schools here tonight that were chosen. I know that you've heard from a school or two, maybe, I don't know, that didn't get chosen, and probably read through and felt that frustration that they didn't get chosen, but I want to share you the beauty of what District 11 is doing with this program. The schools that did not get chosen, did not get chosen for the label of pathway. They still got chosen for continued resource and support to make things better in their schools. So if you think about it, just think about it for a minute, all of the schools that didn't get chosen are going to still continue to enhance and improve their program in some of the same areas that you are choosing to call a pathway. These schools are going to continue to build their programs as well, which means you're not only going to strengthen the schools here with a pathway, but you've got four other schools out here that are going to continue to get the resource and the support to improve their opportunities for kids in their schools, opportunities in their neighborhoods. So this is a win-win for everybody. It truly is, and the schools that didn't get chosen have to opt in and continue with the resource, which is professional development, research and development, in this planning year, and we're going to give it to them. We're going to give it to them, and they're going to be a part of that team. So I just want everyone to know in our community that, yes, this is a selection process, yes, we have schools that are pathways, and yes, we will have someone already, I'll explain to you how, you know, you talk about you may need a coordinator down the road. Well, we have an Edsel that was responsible for innovation and pathways, but with the vacancy that we've had, we haven't been able to have that job fulfilled. We have a way of doing that next year. So we have a way for the continued district resource and support. The schools that didn't get chosen have a way to continue to get support. The schools that are going to get support, and the beauty is, they're going to talk to each other, they're going to learn from each other, and we'll have good things happening in many schools throughout the district with these particular themes. So I just wanted to make sure we knew that we're not leaving anybody out. That's not the equitable thing to do. Thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, thank you for that report and your thoughts on it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So board, this moves to action on May 11th?
The next board meeting, it moves, not consent, it moves to action.
Action. Good to move it to action, good. Good. Thank you. Thank you to all of you for being here. So it looks like our rule is going.
Oh, you don't want to hear about the Milllevy override amendment?
Right, that's what I was asking.
Mr. Gusson is going to speak.
It's past the teacher bedtime too, not just students.
The next item on the agenda, Milllevy Override Plan Amendment, 2021 A, B, those are the PIPs charter schools.
Yes. Glenn, I'll just let you take over because I don't want to say what you're going to say, so I'll let you say it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gladich.
You're driving people over, Glenn.
I know.
That's what I was going to say.
It's not new. It's a story of my career, right? So in your packet, Kathy's going to pull it up for me. Uh, we have a Milllevy Override Plan Amendment that I wanted to hustle through, uh, while I was still here with the district. As you recall, uh, there are two different, uh, years of the Milllevy Override, the 2000 and the 2017. The 2000 Milllevy Override was before there was an inflationary clause allowed, uh, under statute. 2017, there is an inflationary clause. That's not really that pertinent to this discussion. In 2000, we developed a formula to allocate all the different PIPs or program implementation plans to the charter schools based on applicability. For example, uh, if you're a high school charter school, you could get high school class size, uh, money, whi- which is one of the PIPs. But if you're an elementary school, you can't have high school class size money, but you can have elementary class size money because that Milllevy Override election question specifically said high school, middle school, elementary school, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so we have a very, uh, complex spreadsheet that's in your, uh, packet and Kathy, if you'll scroll up to the, the spreadsheet, what you'll see, um, that the way we, in the 2017 Milllevy Override, we just allocate based on the charter's percentage of enrollment compared to the district's total enrollment. And what's happening, uh, although our charter schools enrollment have dropped very significantly through the pandemic along with the district, it, it's a ratio, right? So as the district, if the district's enrollment drop is greater than the charter schools, the charter schools are going to get a bigger percentage of the Milllevy Override and vice versa. And what we're seeing for the first time in Pi- in the 2000 Milllevy Override is that we don't have enough money in the line item to just, that's designated for charter schools to allocate that to the charter schools and that's required by state statute, House Bill 17 dash 1375, which passed 17 years after the Milllevy Override passed, but we still have to comply with that. And so this plan amendment is pretty easy. The next one's going to be tough. This one, all we're asking for is for you to allow us to merge 21A and 21B together to fund the charter schools. 21A was already going to the charter schools. 21B was going to the district because at that time, the Board of Education wanted to, uh, basically offset the, the financial impact of the charters on the district in terms of managing the charter schools with that line item in 21B. Um, so we're going to ask you in this Milllevy Override, which tonight's just non-action, to merge 21A and B, so we have another $500,000 of resource. Kathy, can you scroll just a little bit more to see the totals right there in the yellow? You'll see how close we're getting, um, based on the current enrollments, uh, for the 2000 Milllevy Override. What's going to be interesting i- is when we get to the point, because now we're probably going to bring in LSIA Charter School. Dr. Comfort's been working on that. Um, that's going to bring in influx of charter schools and we're going to see another increase in the charter school line item. Um, and at that point, we're going to have to seriously consider, especially in the 2017 Milllevy Override, which line item are we going to take it out of to fund the charter schools? Because nobody ever wants to give up their Milllevy Override and a lot of that money has been embedded in salary schedules and staffing. Uh, so those decisions will be much harder. Uh, thankfully, I'll be on a beach and I won't be worried about it, but, um, you guys will have to worry about it and, uh, and we'll, we'll watch that for you and see if we could make sure that we're tracking that. This has been in accordance with our very strict governance policy. This has been through the DAC. They gave it a unanimous approval last week. Uh, it's been through the Cabinet, um, which they all gave it a thumbs up and, um, now it comes to the Board, non-action. There has to be a public hearing at the next meeting that's scheduled already and then it requires a super majority, um, uh, vote on the next meeting on the action agenda. And by the way, the way it's written in the governance plan, a super majority is of board members sitting, not, not present. And so tonight would be a perfect example. A super majority is five. And so you have two out, so it would take five out of five to pass, uh, the, the plan amendment, uh, next in two weeks. But, you know, hopefully we'll have more board members that night. So that's the Milllevy Override Plan Amendment and what's happening and the dynamic of that. And like I said, I think this one's pretty easy with merging 21A and 21B, not a big impact on the district's budget, but the next one, when we actually have to start moving money out of different line items to move it into the charter line items, that will be a much more difficult conversation. Any questions for you?
Thank you. Glenn? Questions for Glenn? No questions or comments?
I do have one more comment.
Go ahead.
If I could, President Melvin Beckham.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if, if some of you weren't on the board at the time, uh, some of you will remember this. We had a facilities semi-crisis, uh, shortly after the 2017 Milllevy Override, uh, passed, especially with the Roy J. Wasson campus and the water lines. And the Board approved an advance of eight million dollars out of the bond redemption line item of the 2017 Milllevy Override, uh, to front-end those capital improvements, eight million dollars. And we did, we spent that money really quickly, which quite honestly, I think, gosh, we did it before the pandemic when things got so expensive. Um, well, that plan amendment that the Board approved requires us to pay back the eight million dollars starting next year, except for there's nowhere to pay it back because we have enough money in the bond redemption fund to completely pay off our bonds in December. So I'm in the process of working with the Milllevy Override Oversight Committee to say, okay, we need to tie that up some way. I'm just trying to tie up loose ends and we can't just have that hanging there because the Board approved that it would be repaid, except for there's nowhere to repay it. Um, of course, my preference would be to just let it go because we have so many capital needs, just say, okay, you don't have to pay it back. Um, you don't need it for the bond redemption. But I just want to alert you that that plan amendment is coming and I'm in conversations with the Milllevy Override Oversight Committee on that issue as well.
Okay, thank you. The additional feedback that, uh, Glenn shared after that, do you guys have any questions or thoughts? So, uh, my understanding, reading that amendment and also what you're telling me here, the enrollment in district authorized charters have gone up?
Well, actually, the charter school enrollment has dropped.
Okay.
Pretty significantly, like Roosevelt, you know, I remember when they were in the six forties and now they're down to four forty. Um, and, and Globe is barely viable right now at ninety-five and, uh, East Lake is in the nineties too. So they've been dropping as well. Um, but it, remember, it's that ratio of their percentage drop compared to the district's drop that's putting the pressure on.
Pressure on us. So it's all that PIP 21A, you determine that funding requirement that it's allocated on a per people basis?
Right.
Okay.
Right, although on the 2000 Milllevy Override, it's allocated, if you look on that spreadsheet, based on every single line item, every PIP, based on their applicability. But when in doubt, I give it to the charter school to get it as close as possible.
So now you're combining PIP 21A and 21B into one, but you may not use that whole PIP?
May not.
May not. And what's left over will?
Well, we're going to have to decide because previously, as we were phasing in, it always went to the bond redemption fund.
Right.
But now we're not going to need to do that anymore.
Okay.
So now the Milllevy Committee will make a recommendation to the Board each year. If we have unspent funds, which we always do, where would we move that? You know, and we would, uh, bring that back to the Board. Would we put it into the capital line item? Uh, would we put it into a different item? There's always plenty of uses, curriculum. Um, I know Sherri Kalback would love to have some of that for curriculum. So we'll bring her back a recommendation on that next year.
Okay. Thank you, Glenn.
Okay.
Appreciate it. This moves to action item, right? In two weeks from now?
Correct.
Okay. Um, right, I, I don't think, do we need thumbs to move it to action? Okay.
But it cannot be consent.
No.
Right, action. It is action. And also I'm going to be, there are two board members that are missing today and maybe those two board members may have a question or two when it comes back as action item. So to provide them that opportunity to ask those questions. With that, uh, moving on to the last item on the non-action item, proposed board meeting dates for fiscal year 22, 23. So again, this is new item. Uh, is Phoebe going to present this or Dr. Gladich or?
Actually, this is from your, your Board Secretary, Maricello. This, this would be your board dates for work sessions, school board meetings and special meetings next year. And basically what she did, uh, prior to leaving, uh, she took last year's calendar, looked through everything that was in place and, uh, also paid close attention to the dates that would be needed for, uh, the preliminary budget development assumptions and established your annual calendar based on that. It's very similar to the calendar that you had this year and I would just keep in mind as a board, you always have the ability to schedule a meeting should you choose to. You just have to make sure you give the public the appropriate notice.
Okay, thank you. And this will be posted on the, uh, bulletin board. That's right outside the boardroom too, for our community to see. Any questions or comments on this board calendar for next year?
This could go to consent if you wanted to.
Yeah. Any questions or comments first? None? Thumbs up to go to consent? Okay. Thumbs up to consent?
Feel like Maricello on the right?
So with that, and we are at nine ten, so.
Wow.
Relatively earlier compared to some of our prior board meetings. Uh, future agenda items, tasks, requests for new agenda items from board discussions. And I will share some things that's coming up next week as far as the superintendent search, but first I'll ask if, um, any other board members have requests for future agenda items and I see Director Daniels?
Yeah, I, I was just curious about an update on the clinic at Mitchell, if that's possible.
The update on what?
Update on the clinic.
Oh, health clinic.
Yeah, the health clinic at Mitchell, just curious about that. And, and as well as, um, um, this was from a comment from a community member about the disciplinary areas, where we are not. Just curious. I'm not saying where that should go, I'm just putting that out there.
Disciplinary, disci- could you?
Yes, disciplinary numbers in terms of, since the students have come back and we are working on getting them re-acclimated with their autonomy, you know, they've come back into the field. They're used to having some time of their own and doing some things. I was just curious if we are in a better space or if it's gotten worse. But that's not to say that it has to happen immediately. I'm just saying somewhere.
So you, you're asking for the school district-wide?
Yeah.
Disciplinary data?
Yeah, just where we are. And I'm not saying that has to happen like that.
Okay.
That's not what I'm saying. I just thought I'd follow up and ask.
Yeah, um, so.
Does the Board still get the monthly monitoring reports, uh, on discipline? I haven't seen it since I've been here.
Got, a lot of stuff got disrupted.
Okay, I'll, I'll work on that. Thank you.
I think we get suspension data and stuff like that or do we?
I haven't been copied on anything. I think that's why I asked the question. So I'll, I'll work with the office.
We get a security report, I think, maybe.
Yes, you do. I've seen that.
Mr. Northside, do you have something to add?
Yes, uh, so last year, we moved to an annual summary report. Many of you may remember that at the end of the year. We still have a plan for that, to do the disaggregated data and that will be coming up sometime early June before you all depart. Um, so just the future.
Well, that will answer the question.
Great.
Director Daniels, will it?
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Corey.
Yes.
I'll take that off my list.
Thank you, Mr. Northside.
The other request that you had about update on the health clinic at Mitchell?
Yes.
Are you specifically looking for anything specific?
Yeah, just want to know how it's doing. Um, we are doing our innovation plan, just curious where we are. I thought that was a very good comment and, you know, Dr. Thomas worked hard to get that up and running and the community was like, yes, let's do it. I was just curious, since it came up in a comment.
Okay, I, I think, um, uh, if I.
I'll look into that tomorrow.
Yeah. Mitchell High School has also got a specific FTE position, maybe it's a assistant principal position or a project coordinator position out there whose job is to collaborate with that clinic. It's, if I'm recalling it correct, and I could be totally mistaken, Glenn, is that correct?
Program manager.
Program manager. So maybe that's the person you would have to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I, did you want to say something, Director Jorgensen?
I did.
Okay.
Shh, quiet back there. I had a couple, uh, thoughts. I know previously I brought up a, an idea for having a whistleblower policy and I know that, um, Dr. Thomas had mentioned that we had something at the time and it didn't really work. And then somebody else had brought up some, somehow maybe having a fraud hotline. So I didn't know if we could just maybe.
I have that.
Do we?
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so something like a fraud slash whistleblower connect.
We don't have whistleblowers, but we have a fraud hotline on the web work and we communicate that with staff that they can click on that link and it's anonymous and it goes to a certain place.
Okay, that's great. I didn't know that. So thank you for providing that quick answer.
So just to provide an update for you, I think the board meeting that two weeks back, uh, when you had to participate remotely from Florida, in negotiations, this was brought up whistleblower policy by two of our employee groups. And they are going to be, the feedback that we got is that they are going to be looking at the policy itself, but not right now, since we are at the middle, uh, almost at the end in the fall. So that's.
Yes, sir, and one not contained in the handbook, but one contained with the school board policies.
Okay, love it. Great. Okay, next on my agenda of things to think about was, um, man, we heard, I think, Director Lom, you had somebody that was at facilities for 41 years. And I know we as a board had talked at a past retreat about doing some sort of celebration event, whether it be a, a dinner or a dessert reception or something like that, where we invited just staff, um, of all the different departments, if they served like 20 years or more. And then it, maybe we recognize them with like a, a little plaque of 25 or a plaque of 30 or plaque with 35 or whatever it is, um, something like that to maybe celebrate. The dedication to a district that long is just remarkable and, and, and we should be celebrating that and thanking them. So, um, something about discussing what that would look like. Um, I know we're getting a bunch of retiring, uh, celebration invites right now in our celebration invites right now in our email. But if we had some kind of event where we hosted like a dessert or something like that and, you know, just as a way to say thank you for, you know, and they might even have to be retiring, but they're still serving and just like, wow, you've been here, you know, twenty-nine years. That's awesome. And we celebrate you and thank you. I don't know. What do you guys thought? Yeah. But thoughts on, open to discussing it?
Yeah. I'm asking. Director Jorgensen talked about.
Okay.
That's, so we are at the end of the school year. So that's what, so we have, and we, this is, I'm just thinking, next week we have a work session, but two weeks from now because of graduations. That's the only work session that we have. So we got a packed agenda in addition to the superintendent search thing, so. But what you are suggesting, it's something that I've talked to Brenda, two of them is McKinnney about their, I've attended some of the ESP council meetings and they acknowledge thirty-year employees and forty-year employees. And usually they get a pin and I was saying we should, yeah.
Just send me an invite.
Maybe we can do something at a formal board meeting recognizing those employees. And maybe it's just doing, we have an agenda item now that's specifically board recognition of excellence. So maybe that's what we bring up in that. And we'll talk about it. If this is something you want to add as a quick topic of discussion, next week's work session, we can do that, since we got the thumbs up.
Sounds good.
Is that okay, Dr. Glutch?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else from board members? Okay, so just to get the board feedback in what I'm going to talk about is about the superintendent's search. Each one of you got an envelope which has got all the names of the thirty-five candidates. Tomorrow, at some point in time, Dr. Walt Cooper will reach out to you individually through emails that come to your direct D eleven websites to share information on the ten to twelve candidates who have been narrowed down from that thirty-five. And that will come in a special link to you, which is encrypted. You would not be able to share it with others. You would not be able to print it. You would not be able to, all the things that go with it. So it is confidential. So look over that information and come prepared for the May second executive session when we will talk about the whole list of candidates, ten to twelve candidates. That executive session starts on May second. We already talked about it a month back. And the board set aside time that whole afternoon. So this would be on Monday, starting at one o'clock. The only action, only agenda item would be executive session. So we would come here, start the executive session, either meet here in this room or go down to the conference level room out there. And our idea is to look at those ten to twelve candidates. And if we can narrow it down to the finalist, then we will announce those finalists coming out of that meeting. So that would be two or three candidates. But if we need additional information, we need to schedule another meeting on May sixth, which would be the Friday. And that would be for the five or six candidates that we narrowed it down from ten to twelve. Hopefully all that makes sense, what I'm saying. So that six candidates, we will have an opportunity to interview in executive session. We haven't announced the finalists yet. And that will be for thirty minutes each. We will interview those candidates approximately. That can be either in person, if the candidates are local, or virtual, if they are going to be joining us from other parts of the country. So thirty minutes approximately, six candidates, that work, that executive session on May sixth could be three hours, maybe an additional thirty minutes for discussion to narrow the candidates down to three finalists or four finalists or two finalists, whatever we come out with. So the hope is that after the May second and the May sixth executive session, we will have the finalists to announce. And after that, it has to go through a public process. And no further, it's, everything is open and transparent. We cannot hold executive sessions after that. Okay? Any questions to me on that? May second, it's going to start at one o'clock? May sixth. That's what I need the feedback from the board from. So I was suggesting in the email that I sent to the board that if we can start it at eight-thirty or nine, considering that some of these candidates could be participating from the east coast. So with the two-hour time difference, it's going to be eleven o'clock in the morning out there. If we start it at two or three in the evening on a Friday, then we are asking these candidates to participate at five o'clock from New York or Massachusetts or Florida, wherever they are from. So is that something the board is willing to do, to meet either at eight-thirty in the morning, first thing, so we can recognize the time difference and get them in early on a Friday morning as opposed to getting them in late on a Friday afternoon or evening? Yeah, we can do nine. On Friday? Okay.
I'm not available till late morning.
What's that?
I'm not available till late morning.
Okay, what time are you available, Director Loma? About eleven o'clock? On Friday, May sixth? Okay, so eleven o'clock, are you, anybody available? Four o'clock? Okay. So four is going to put us at six o'clock on the east coast. Okay. Do we want to meet on a weekend then? But then we are asking those candidates to participate. How about Monday, then the following Monday? May, is that ninth?
Well, I think if they want the job, Saturday wouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Is that what the board would prefer to do, meet on? So if Director Daniels can only meet at four o'clock on Friday, that, what's that? At four o'clock on Friday? But that's going to be six o'clock on the east coast. I would prefer not to inconvenience them. And also have them bright and early in the morning as opposed to asking them to come and answer. Okay. Is that the will of the board to have it on Friday at four o'clock in the evening? Or Saturday at nine o'clock? Should we ask Maricela to give, send out a survey? Okay. So Maricela or Kathy in this case, or Maricela?
I can, Anthony and I can work on a survey. Marcela won't be, well, I can, I'll talk to Marcela in the morning. Yeah, I'll talk to her in the morning.
So I will also communicate with her and maybe send an email to figure out what are the options. And she can send a survey to all board members, including the two board members that are missing today.
We'll work with her. If you could get a hold, maybe tomorrow midday? Not morning, I, but we could get together and I could work on that survey for you. And just a, just a side note, when I interviewed with District Eleven, the very first time, it was an eight-thirty in the evening interview.
Okay. Okay.
Colorado time, eight-thirty.
Okay. So.
I was here, yeah, at eight-thirty in the evening.
Okay. So then most likely it could be a four o'clock meeting on May sixth, which could potentially go up till seven-thirty or eight. Yeah. Calendar review. Monday, May second, we have that special board meeting in the boardroom to go into executive session and that meeting will start at one o'clock. Wednesday, May fourth, we have the work session in the boardroom and that meeting starts at four PM. The topics right now are special programs and five essentials review. May sixth, we have this potential executive session starting at four PM on Friday. May eleventh, we have the regular board meeting, four PM, executive session, five-thirty. The week of May seventeenth to twentieth, we have graduations. And May twenty-fifth, regular board meeting, boardroom, starting at five-thirty PM. May, may I have a motion to adjourn? Road call, please.
Mrs. Daniels?
Aye.
Mr. Jorgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Loma?
Aye.
Mr. Mel Packham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ock?
Aye.
Aye. I have it. And we are adjourned at nine twenty-seven PM.